We're live?[4.54][4.54](Laughter).
You want to say it when we're on TV.
So, we're going to start here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Kevin Rigstead, the Chairman of the Goffstown Zoning Board, and welcome to the June 1st meeting. I'm going to go through some perfunctory things here before we start. The Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and one alternate. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Derek Horn for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Derek Horn at Town Hall to get results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, I'd like to introduce the board.
I'm Derek Horn, staff. Ed Loopy, member.
Len Stewart, alternate.
Galabrig, member.
Kathy Housen, vice chair.
And we have one elected member who is not here yet this evening, and so I assume that you will serve with us again tonight and be a voting member there. Len? Okay, so the first item we'll make quickly is to approve the meetings on the May 4th minutes. Any comments?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the May 4th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections?
I don't see any.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Five-oh. No changes. So, the first item is, in our public hearings this evening, is going back to a case that we left off with last meeting. Scott Buckland, applicant, is seeking variances to allow him to operate his boat repair business from his residence at 115 Dannis Park Road. The applicant has requested variances from Section 3.7.1 of the zoning ordinance to allow mixed non-residential and single-family use. Section 3.11.F.1 for sale of goods, Section 3.11.F.2 for outdoor storage, Section 3.11.G.2 for boat repair and service, and Section 3.11.G.5 for the sale and installation of parts and accessories. The property is located at 115 Dannis Park Road, which is map 25, lot 27, in a residential two district. The ZBA voted 5-0-0 to find this application did not have potential regional impact at the May 4th, 2010, meeting. And before we proceed on that, good evening. Good evening, Joanna. Hello. Joanna, are you one? We're starting with the Buckland application.
If all five of you are here, then I think it's better that I not vote.
Okay, so we'll leave Len as an acting voting member on that, then.
I only had one question. If you do approve this, is this considered a home occupation, or do they need to go for site plan?
They would need site plan.
Because I think, just reading through everything, I think a lot of the issues that were brought up, if it does have to go to site plan, are actually planning-related more than zoning.
Okay.
Point of clarification, she can still participate in any discussion we have.
Yes.
It's just the vote that you...
Okay.
Except for the deliberations, you should not participate in deliberations, only the voting members.
Okay.
I know, we've done that in the past.
Point of clarification, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Len, you're still on board for this one, then. All right, you're on the hook. Okay, so where we left off is we had heard from the applicant, we had heard from the abutters, and we had gone back to the applicant for re-comment and things. We still have, the public hearing is still open, so comments are still accepted from both the applicant and the abutters, interested parties, and I guess how I'm going to go back to it is that the board had wanted to take time to review the materials that were provided and discussion, and I think we, I would like to go back and allow the applicant to comment on anything that has been provided between then and now, and the abutters the same. Any comments from the board on that before we enter deliberations?
The only thing I'd like to suggest is that, as comments are made, that they not be repetitive.
I agree.
To things that we've heard in the past, if it's something new.
Okay. Any other comments, how we want to proceed on this application? So Attorney Gallant, does that seem reasonable to you?
It surely does, Mr. Chairman. I would only say that apparently there's been some materials submitted on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Hawkes that are received late Friday. I don't know if procedurally the board wants to hear, because I'll be addressing those items in large part.
Please come on up, and you can make your statements.
Thank you.
And please, always, this evening, introduce yourselves. This is where we're going to do it from, because the best, if you weren't here last month, the camera gets the best shot at you sitting right where Attorney Gallant is, and it can hear you perfectly, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record. My name is Clifford Gallant. I'm with the firm of Velo, Ophred, Dolan, Gallant, from Manchester, New Hampshire, and I represent the applicant, Mr. Buckland. I'd like to perhaps start this evening with addressing items that were set forth since we last were here back on May the 4th, specifically material that's under a cover letter from Attorney Beeson, dated May 28th of 2010. Again, recognizing the comment that we not be repetitive or redundant, the first item in this submittal makes reference to, or seeks to have this board reconsider, the determination that the application doesn't have any regional impact. I would submit that the reasons that are set forth in this submittal doesn't advance any basis for this board to consider doing that. From Mr. Buckland's standpoint, has been the case repeatedly, there seems to be a number of assertions being made that supposedly Mr. Buckland is engaging in some activity along the river that is somehow, some way, including the dumping of hazardous materials in the river. However, from what I can see, every time that assertion is made, it's a conclusory statement. There's been no evidence submitted to substantiate that assertion. And quite frankly, in that first section, in support of the assertion and offering conclusory statements that include, quote, "Miss Hobbs have witnessed or has witnessed discharge of some unknown substances into the river over the years and made numerous complaints," I have not seen any evidence of any action being taken by any governmental organization pursuant to those purported complaints as it relates to purported hazardous And the assertion that regardless of whether this board has any concern over the potential environmental degradation of the river, to me, just seems to be a bit beyond the pale. Certainly, from our vantage point, we don't get that at all. A lot of questions have been asked regards to that, and I think each step of the way, Mr. Buckland has addressed those, unequivocally indicating that there's no such activity going on in that river. In terms of item number two, that is, the assertion that the statements that Mr. Buckland made back on May 4th at first hearing indicates that his business would provide or produce or present a serious environmental harm as it relates to the river. He indicated that what he's looking to do is to continue the operation of his business, and reference was made to a series of statements or invoices that were submitted before this board in conjunction with the application, seeking to overturn the decision of Mr. Horn as related to the grandfathered use issue. And there were a number of invoices, I'm sure the board recalls, that included invoices going back to, I think, the 1970s, and some of them included engine repair. Mr. Buckland has made, I think, as clear as clear could be, the fact that what he's looking to do is to continue as he's done throughout the past number of years, and just focus his business on the repair and servicing of boats. On the issue in terms of concern about the removal or disposition of oil or substances of that nature, he has indicated unequivocally that while that's something that he'll steer away from, quote-unquote, that to the extent that those actions or activities took place on that property, he always did it in compliance with the requirements in terms of the lawful disposition of those types of materials. He would say to you that any time that he was involved with that type of activity, those materials were properly disposed of, utilizing the local transfer station for the disposition of those types of materials. But that's not looking, what he's looking to do certainly, as I said, going forward. But to the extent that there's an assertion, looking back at invoices, that go back to, I think, as early as 1979, to the extent that there's any reference to any oil change in some ten, I think, quarts of oil at one point were cited, or something to that effect, Mr. Buckland unequivocally indicates there's never been any evidence of any kind of harm in the past, and he's certainly not looking to do that prospectively as he has stated. Now, there's also some assertions in here in regards to shrink wraps. I believe Exhibit 3 is an excerpt from some website having to do with the material used to shrink wrap a boat. And the query is, in page 2 of the materials, under Section 2, "What does Mr. Buckland do with the excess shrink wrap?" Now, again, that's another assertion, inquiry, that's supposed to set off some kind of a, I guess, a bellwether, if you will, that if this kind of activity is going on out there, well, he must be doing something improper. There's no documentation to substantiate that assertion, and in fact, what I really find, I don't want to say comical, but I don't know if the board remembers, but with the application that was submitted back in the summer of last year, there were a series of exhibits. Tab number 30 included a copy of a $100 bill that Mr. Buckland received from Mr. Hobbs that he kept, and I have a copy of it if the board would like to see it. Perhaps I should actually offer it as an exhibit, if it were considered. But it says Frank Hobbs, November 2006, shrink wrap of boat. So, my point being is that the assertion about the shrink wrapping and what happens with the materials, in terms of any overage, I guess, the fact that there's no documentation, no evidence to support that he is somehow, some way, having shrink wrap go into the river, over and above that, that assertion belies the fact that Mr. Hobbs himself utilized the services of Mr. Buckland to do that some three years ago, three and a half years ago. If I could, I'd like to offer that up, if the board is... It goes on to say in that section, again, referencing over the years, numerous complaints, but there's no documentation to substantiate these purported complaints. Regardless of whether the board has any concern about the environmental degradation, degradation of the river, it should act in such a way that Mr. Buckland is going to do something untoward to the river despite the lack of any documentation to substantiate it. The same assertion holds true as relates to something having to do with hull cleaner, but there's been no documentation advanced to support that assertion. Mr. Buckland has said repeatedly that the activities that go on out there, there is absolutely no disposition of any materials in the river. There's a reference to, an assertion in here in terms of the fact that contrary to what Mr. Buckland had stated, he says that the property does not slope down toward the river. The fact of the matter is, is that Mr. Buckland indicated in page, I'm referencing page 17 of the minutes, the fact that there was in fact a split, and that a portion does in fact slope towards the river. My point of only bringing this out is the fact that they're trying to get him caught up in making some misstatements or mischaracterizations to this board, and the fact is, is if you read the minutes and what his testimony was, it's clear in terms of what he articulated. Issue about the fact that a photograph, Exhibit 5, has some evidence of some grass not being grown at the immediate edge of the river, somehow, some way, indicates that there's some utilization of chemicals along the river. But again, that too is a conclusory statement, there's nothing to substantiate that. There's a series of other assertions in here that are of similar nature as far as what other folks have supposedly seen in terms of activities out there with the property. And I would submit to you that Mr. Buckland is here to say that unequivocally, he's not engaged in any kind of activity that involves any dumping or any improper utilization of his properties down there on Dannis Park Road. I also note that one of the materials that was submitted appears to be a letter, actually, there were two of them that were submitted on or about, I believe, May the 12th to the board, or 13th, thereabouts. One was supposedly from the individual that was interested in purchasing the property across the street, and that apparently appears to be, happens to be, an individual who happens to have the same last name as the Hobbs. If I read that correctly, was a hyphenated last name, if I could, for the record, I believe it was Julie Hobbs-Hargood, and exactly the date was May 13th of 2010. Would appear to me that she probably most likely is a relative of Mr. and Mrs. Hobbs. The other is a letter that was submitted on May 12th, the preceding day, by a person by the name of Stephanie Balseo. And while certainly I don't have any question about the fact that they have the right to submit and be heard, again, those letters, those assertions, in large part are conclusory in nature, and to the extent that they make specific assertions about Mr. Buckland and disposition of materials on his property, he steadfastly denies them. It's also interesting to indicate that a certain here that somehow, some way, he engaged in some trickery to have one of the co-occupants of that property on Bowdoin Street in deciding the petition that was submitted to the board and considered back on May the 4th. Lastly, the assertion about the fact that the property is not unique in size and proximity to the river, and that somehow, some way, Mr. Buckland changed his explanation when questioned by the board, I don't think that's accurate as well. And I would take a look at the minutes, and specifically, page 6, 6 to 7, as well as page 16. The chair asked if any of the work requires boats to be in the water, and in response, Mr. Buckland said no. But then further on, at page 16, he goes on and says, "There was confusion about using the water for repair." He doesn't fix boats while in the water, but he does use it to take it for a test drive to determine what's wrong. That provides a safety issue for other people. The biggest part is having access to the water, and also, he has the ability to take boats out of the water. He has made it more accessible to do this. And it goes on. And in terms of the ramp, and the uniqueness of the ramp, as well as the size and the configuration of the lot, there was a lot of discussion about that. There are a couple of photographs, if the board would permit, that show the location of this ramp going back decades. Now, they're hard to make out, but if the board were interested, I'd like to hand them up, and the purpose of it being showing the existence of this boat ramp, going back, and Mr. Buckland can testify to this as well, but going back to, these photographs are taken in the 60s. May I submit them to the board?
How is it relevant to the argument?
Well, to the fact that that boat ramp has been there for decades, and it lends to the issue about the uniqueness of the property, that's the reason why I'm offering it.
Okay. All right.
All right. I have multiple sets, if...
We can just pass them around.
Yeah.
Before you stray too far off, not stray, before you go too far from the last point you made regarding the business being on the river and how it's a part of the business and its partial requirement of the business, is it normal for a boat repair business that it is required to be on the river, or can it be operated outside the river?
Well, could I defer to Mr. Buckland, because he's the one that operates the business?
It makes it very difficult not to have the water to be on a test boat.
Okay.
Almost impossible.
Is there similar businesses to you that are not on the river?
Yes, but they generally try to get to a body of water somehow to test the boats when necessary, which can be even more difficult.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could, the two photographs we handed up, they're kind of difficult to depict. The first one, I'll call it black and white, with a gentleman that is on what appears to be a tire wall. And the second is a photograph of some children playing in the river. And while it's hard to perhaps pick out, on the right-hand side of the child closest to the foreground, you can see that there are tires, and I would submit to you, and Mr. Buckland can testify as to this as well, that those photographs, or those tires, are the side of the tire wall that that gentleman is sitting on, which happens to be, I believe, the father of Kevin Raska, who testified before you last year in connection with the grandfathered use issue, showing the existence of that ramp back at that point in time.
This is the tire wall, this is the one, and this is the one here. Is there something about the...
There's reference also to 483B in this material, and about a potential violation of the Comprehensive Shoreland Protection Act. However, once again, there's been no evidence submitted indicating there has been any such complaint levied or a finding by DES or any other governmental agency that there's any such violation. Certainly, the board is aware of the fact that there's been some communications with the Department of Environmental Services as it relates to other issues, and certainly, it seems that given the history, if you were, if you will, that if there was any such basis towards assert such a complaint or evidence to support it, that a complaint could involve it, there has been no evidence of any such activity.
I have a question, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but do you know when the last time was that DES was on the property?
Last fall. My understanding is, in speaking with the representatives of the Department of Environmental Services, Scott was there, but it was, they knew about the business, it was, they were out there. I think it might have been in connection with the retaining wall issue. I think folks by the name of Linda McGoon, who's a supervisor, as well as Thomas Gilbert, who's a wetlands, I think, or person, were out there, and to the best of my knowledge, they did not find or make any assertion about any violation of the Comprehensive Shoreland Protection Act. The only issues that I'm aware of are the retaining wall issue that we spoke of last time, as well as the water sampling for the purported, what they believe to be a discharge from a pipe, which Mr. Buckland's testified to, that is utilized to take water in from the river for the purpose of servicing his irrigation system. And that test, which I believe we handed up an email dated May 4th from a fellow by the name of Henderson, indicating, the tests indicated, and that was for bacteria, came back that there was no, there was no indication of any heightened level of bacteria in the river, anything beyond what normally would be in a river at that particular timing of the year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Respecting the request, and I not be redundant, I don't think I have anything new that I could add. I appreciate, I would like if I could, to the extent that anything new is offered, if I could offer to rebut it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I refuse to bring it up.
Did anybody have any questions for Attorney Gallant before you left? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The abutters, Attorney Basson? And you'll have to straighten me out. Is that, how do you pronounce your last name? And I want to get it right.
I know you're talking to me, so it works fine.[1552.24][1552.24](Laughter). I will be brief as well. The submission that is dated May 28th, 2010, was meant to specifically address some issues that came up on May 4th, focusing particularly on the fact that Mr. Buckland is seeking a variance. It is the property that matters, not the business. It is how the hardship is impacted by the location, not the hardship to the business. So, the questions about whether it helps to have the business on the water is an appropriate question, but it's the wrong hardship. The hardship has to emanate from the property. And in the first instance, the issue of regional impact, I simply question whether this board would want to know if a similar application was being made in New Boston. If someone was putting some application right on the river, right upriver from the folks here in Goffstown, would you want to receive notice? And that's the point of the statute regarding an application or a development of regional impact. Should other municipalities know? And under the statute, one of the criteria is if it's on a water body that goes to another community, then it's a consideration for regional impact. Should Manchester know? Should some other community know because this river is not located completely within Goffstown? I put it to you, I ask you to reconsider your decision on that factor. The second issue in the submittal is the, it goes to the heart of the balance between your concern for the public interest and the spirit of your ordinance and the issues raised by the application. There's a lot of discussion about whether Mr. Buckland intentionally plans to dump things in the river. Attorney Gallant suggested that that's what I'm suggesting. That is not what I'm suggesting. I'm not suggesting that when he takes oil out of a boat, he's going to dump it in the river. My concern, as the representative for the abutters, is that there's an accident, and that some of this material gets washed in the river. No one is suggesting that he's going to collect all his oil and dump it in the river. And by his own records, you can see the kinds of work that he does in the past, and he has said that that's what he wants to do. He wants to continue to do what he's done in the past. He takes out spark plugs and deals with gaskets and lubricants and oil and all of that stuff, and it generates waste. And if this application were coming before you to put in the center of Goffstown, you would be concerned about the disposition of that waste. It's heightened because it's on the river, and so I have given you his records to show the nature of the chemicals and substances that are generated from that business. The other issue that I think is critical is this discussion about the uniqueness of his property that came up in May, about the size and proximity to the river. If you simply look at your own tax records, his property is not unique. There's nothing unique about the size of his property or its location on the river, which is a critical factor in determining whether a hardship exists. To simply summarize, I do not believe that Mr. Buckland has established the criteria necessary for this extraordinary relief that he's seeking. And that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Any questions for the attorney?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we anticipate closing the public hearing, is there anyone that we have not heard from? Butters for or against or interested parties that would like to make a point? Second row, ma'am, please come forward. Please state your name.
My name's Stephanie Falco. I live at 7 Bowdoin Street, which is right off of Dannis Park, and is directly, my property is directly... is directly behind Mr. Buckland's. I want to start off by saying this is nothing against him. My opinion, I just think, needs to be heard, as I plan to raise my family in this neighborhood. As far as my letter went, my husband did sign and confirm that he did not understand what was going on with the petition. My husband is a native from Brazil. He speaks Portuguese, as do I. We speak Portuguese with each other. He doesn't speak English very well, and we've been trying to keep the peace in the neighborhood. And I think he was maybe confused about it and does not want his name on that list. As far as the business goes, I've, from what I've seen, on my street, Bowdoin Street, is a dumping ground. Throughout work in my own yard and across the street, and seeing on the sides of his property at the end, I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with him having a storage facility on that road. Like I said, it looks like a dump down there. And I'm not accusing him directly because I haven't seen it. I work 40 hours a week. My husband works 60 hours a week. We're not around to see it. But when I do see it, it's either from a lawnmower or a tractor that comes from his property. I am concerned about what's going into the river. I think it should be addressed by the town. Also with the trash, I think it needs to be addressed because it's becoming more of a problem. There's more trash. It just keeps getting worse and worse. As far as traffic from this business, like I said, I'm not home all the time, but when I am home, my two-year-old daughter is out playing. She's out running around, not unsupervised, but I worry about increased traffic about my daughter. You know, it's a family neighborhood. I'm getting ready to buy this house, and this wasn't brought up to me when I was interested in buying there. So I think it's going to have a big influence on our decision to buy down there our first home, as it did when we moved in. We picked the area because it was nice, right in front of the river, residential, quiet. That's, that's what we're looking for, is a family-oriented neighborhood, not a commercial Another point that I wanted to say is this business can be, could be taken elsewhere, into a neighborhood, you know, somewhere where it's not zoned residential. I think it was zoned that way for a reason. And, you know, with all the dumping, I think it all needs to be addressed before this is even considered. Another thing, I have seen the shrink wrap myself buried. I'm not really concerned about making any accusations, saying that he's dumping the shrink wrap into the river. I just want it to be known that I've seen it. It's unearthed from when the plows came this winter, and I see all the material. As far as washing things into the river, I can't say he's washing chemicals into the river, but from working on auto and boats, I mean, there has to be some kind of chemicals that come off those boats into the driveway that goes straight down to the river. So, I mean, I see him hosing his driveway daily. I mean, that's not an uncommon thing for someone to do with a nice property like his. But I am concerned about the chemicals that are being washed off the boats. Like I said before, it's not anything personal against him. He's always been very friendly with me, and I'm not trying to mess things up for him, but I do feel that my opinion should be stated, and everyone should know, because I plan to raise my family in that neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek, I believe hers was one of the letters as well that we got right, that Attorney...
Yes.
Attorney Gallant addressed my letter, but I have, I mean, everything I put in my letter, I, I've seen with my own eyes.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I was just making a statement that they weren't in the stack, so you'd have them in the file, though, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. There was someone else in the back that was interested. Please come forward.
Hi.
Have a seat. State your name.
Brian Evans. I reside at 10 Cole Street, Goffstown. I'm on the other side of the park, Lynchville Park.
Okay.
I myself, I have nothing against this Mr. Buckland for running a business, but there's a place to run it and there's a place not to. As this lady just stated, if we were looking at a house down there and I was, we wanted to buy down there, this would really give me strong hesitations, because I would not want to live by a boat repair or an auto repair shop, being in a residential neighborhood. And that's basically what we are, whether you're Dana's Park or Lynchville Park. We are living in a residential neighborhood with children. And I've got a son that's a Boy Scout that's 12 years, going to be 12 years old. We've received some information from a neighbor down there, and he started asking me some questions. He does not care to go in the river, whether it's swimming down on our end or even fishing. And one of the signs that comes to my mind is having your own personal boat launch. I wish I had my own personal boat launch, but I don't have one. I have to use one that's down the end of Chattel. I know that there are other boat businesses in the area that don't have water access, and they do just fine, and they're even bigger. I do know that he also has another business, boat business up in the Lakes region, and he's, in my opinion, he's probably looking to expand down here on Dana's Park if he gets the chance to. But bottom line is, there's a place to run a boat business, not down here, not when it involves families, residential, as I said before. He should probably look elsewhere where it's best suited for that.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken before? Did you have something additional to add to the conversation?
Slightly.
Come on up. Please restate your name and state your point.
Hi, my name's Chris Nato. I live at 17 Sunny Ave in Goffstown. I just want to say, I keep hearing a lot of comments about Marina Commercial Enterprise. If anyone from the board's driven down there, it's clear that it's not a commercial enterprise. It really is just a guy that fixes boats one a day on average. Nothing, many of the people that have spoken, they have very just points. However, a lot of people don't even, didn't even know about this until these meetings started to come up, which again goes to the point of saying that this isn't some commercial Marina enterprise. Marina has multiple slips, storage facilities, there's none of that. I mean, this is just a guy that fixes one boat a day if he's lucky. This is not a commercial enterprise. If anyone's been down there, they can tell and see very clearly that it's not traffic. There's, there's none of that going on down there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Gallant, any last comments?
I'd like to make a few.
My name is Scott Buckland, and I'm from Dana's Park. Couple of things. There's been some questions about dumping waste into the river, which I can reassure you has never happened and never will. There's been some questions about dumping stuff on Bowdoin Street, I think maybe referring to my grass clippings from my lawn that sometimes I bring back there and put in a compost pile. There's never been any unearthed shrink wrap, tires, debris, anything of that nature. All that stuff is disposed of properly. Any waste oil that I've generated in the past has always gone to the town transfer station so they can burn the waste oil. But we've taken that off the table. We will not be generating any more waste oil. There has never been any contaminated chemicals washed off boats, used on boats. I don't even wash my own boat in my own yard. As far as the regional impact, this is something that's very small. It's kept right, right here in Goffstown. It's, I don't see how it could possibly affect any other regions, and that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Okay.
But there's absolutely, positively no dumping of any chemical waste or debris or dump or unearthing of anything.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Buckland.
Thank you.
I have a few questions if you may, could.
Please.
I was down there today, looking out, looking for the allegations or for evidence of the allegations that were in the letters, and I saw a couple of things that I want to ask you about. One, at the intersection of Dana's Park and Bowdoin, kind of off to the side a little bit, there's a boat that almost looks like it's abandoned, it looks like it's been wrapped for a couple of years.
That belongs to Kevin Miller. I know which one you're talking about.
Okay. And then a little bit further back from that, going up Bowdoin, where the road bends on the right-hand side, there's what appears to be a sofa or two sofas and an old fireplace.
I've seen that before.
And that's not, that doesn't belong to anything that you've done.
I've got three-quarters of a million dollars invested in property down there. I've done my absolute best to clean this whole area up, and I think I've done a pretty good job. For somebody to, which I've been accused of before, dumping sofas and chairs and that sort of stuff down there is ridiculous. It's definitely not mine. My little backlot is a mess from the windstorm. We've been so busy, I haven't had a chance to go back there and clean up the broken branches and debris and stuff like that. We actually had a tree come down and land on two campers in a shed. I haven't had a chance to pick up any of that stuff yet. Usually, it's all nice and neat and clean. The lawn is mowed, but no, those, to answer your question, those chairs and couches and stuff are definitely not for me.
Where is your backlot in relation to...
The very end of Bowdoin Street. I'm the very last one.
That's where it says, where there's the chain across that says no trespassing?
Correct.
And yours is on the other side?
On the other side. And I've, that one, we got it after the '06 flood. It was a mess. It was horrible back there. And I've done my best to try to clean it up, but there, there is some debris back there. There's lots, lots of trees that were cut up and put back there, and over time, we will, we will get that cleared up.
Yeah, I saw the trees, and that's, given the storms that we've had, that's kind of...
And I just haven't had a chance to clean that up.
Okay. I think so for now.
Yeah, what was the outcome of your viewing?
Except for the abandoned boat and that pile of, it, the individual properties, I didn't see what was described in the letters, except, like I said, the sofas and the woodstove that he says are not his, and the boat that he says is not his. That's what I saw. On Bowdoin Street, the properties are older-looking and maybe more rundown than those on Dana's Park, that have been already upgraded and, you know, prepared for future storms and things like that. But I didn't see any, I did take pictures, but they're in my camera. We couldn't print them out, so if you want to see in my camera when we have a break, you can see what...
Actually, I did the same drive-by, and I just wanted to see if we concur with what we saw visually from the road.
I didn't get out and walk where it said no trespassing, because I wasn't sure if that was Mr. Buckland's property or not. And from a distance, I mean, I saw the field, and around a corner, I saw what looked like it might be a portion of a, I don't know, some sort of machinery, yellow something or other, I don't know if it was like...
Snowplow, maybe?
Maybe, yeah. But that was it. I didn't see piles of anything dumped there.
Lynn?
Just a little bit more about your operations, Mr. Buckland. We've heard a lot about continuing your business, but as part of the services that you offer, do you do things that potentially generate waste? I'm thinking bilge cleaning, hull washing, stern drive rebuilds, where you'd be draining a lot of, was there any of those things, services that you offer?
In the past, yes. For this variance, we're taking a lot of anything that has to do with engine oil. There's never really been any use of antifreeze, hull cleaners, bilge cleaners, stuff like that. I've never done that, because at the end of the day, I swim in that water, too. We're going to take anything that has to do with the engine oil and stuff like that and just take it right off the table. I'll no longer offer oil changes, engine rebuilds, that sort of thing. What we're trying to do is generate it more towards accessory installations. If somebody wants a radio or a GPS unit, set of speakers, that sort of stuff. Water impellers, which don't have anything to do with engine oil and that sort of stuff. It's basically diagnostics for, you know, electronics that go bad on boat, a bad alternator, a bad starter, simple, very light mechanical stuff, but nothing to do with any engine oil or coolant, anything like that.
So anything involving hazardous waste, could you be willing to...
Take it right off the table.
...make from the picture?
Right off the table.
As far as storage, the only boats that are stored on your property are the, over the off-season, are the ones that are your personal property?
Correct. And the stuff that I do have come in there over the past 20 years, I've been very, very controlling of how many boats I keep on the property at once. A couple at best. And the stuff is there no more than a day or two. It's in and it's out, because I don't want a place to be an eyesore. It's my home, too. And I, and I respect my neighbors.
Nothing is removed from the trailer as everything is serviced, comes in on a trailer or goes out?
Goes out on a trailer. Yep, exactly.
So that was a question I had early on, was to describe what your business is. And I'm going to be honest to say, I think your business has evolved over these last two meetings on what, and what the business is. So with that statement, how are you able to guarantee that's what your business is? How are you able to guarantee that it seems that your business is a word-of-mouth business? People come up the river with problems, which is something that you stated. How do they know that you don't fix their oil leak, or they're running out of fuel, or any one of those things? How do you tell them, I can't do that for you? By the way, because I don't have a business card, or that, a sign that says any of these things, how do you tell them what your business is and is not?
Because I've already done a good job at doing that over the last 20 years. But I've already, I've already chased people away that, sorry, I can't do this.
Okay, so people know that you don't fix core engine issues that require materials?
I try to stay away from that stuff on a general rule of thumb anyways, just because I don't want to get involved with it. I like the stuff that's in and out, nice and easy, not a lot of work, not a lot of fuss.
So is winterizing part of your business?
It is, but winterizing is just draining water. There's never been any antifreeze.
And no other replacements of oils, topping off of fluids, replacing fluids?
No greasing, no fogging, no nothing.
And that's, who does that, then? I mean, so what's winterizing to you? Is just shrink wrapping?
Just draining the water.
And shrink wrapping.
That's all you have to do.
Shrink wrapping.
And shrink wrapping. And all the shrink wrap that I have left over for scraps is all 100% recyclable. Dr. Shrink offers these nice, nice bags that you can re-bag the stuff up. I actually send it back to the company that I buy it off of, and I take back every last piece of it.
Okay.
And I even offer, in the springtime, if we happen to cut some shrink wrap off of a customer's boat, we re-bag that up and send that right back to them.
Okay. All right. Any other last questions?
Where's the water being drained from?
Engine blocks. And it's usually drained into the bilge of the boat.
And it goes where from there?
Usually stays in the bilge of the boat. As long as there's room in the bilge for the water to expand, there's no, no chance of any damage being done to the boat.
From freezing and temperature changes and all that?
Plenty of room. And then we vent the shrink wrap, a couple of vents on each end, and it just naturally evaporates. So we're not, we're not draining water on the ground. It's all staying right in the boat. And it's very minimum. It's a couple of quarts at best.
Any last questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buckland.
Thank you.
Is there a point that you need to make that hasn't been made? I love hearing people.
In a sense, it's, you know, it's not going to be long.
All right. Please keep it short. Yes, come forward.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that...
Could you restate your name again?
Oh, sorry. Vicki, V-I-C-K-I, Doane, D-O-A-N-E. I live at 117 Dana's Park. And your question was, I was thinking long and hard about uniqueness, because that's pretty much what I took back from it. And looking at our land, the slope of the river, of our driveway, the pavement that goes into the river, does not impact the embankment. So for us, it's, a lot of people put their boats in and out of the river off, just bonk off the, off their properties. Ours is nice, gradual. It's not impacting, stirring up, killing stuff. And I was thinking, as the aesthetics, it's, it's not unusual to see boats in people's yards. So we're not really any different from anybody else that lives along the water. Everyone has boats, three, four, five, six, wave runners, boats, sitting on their lawns and their yards. So I just, I was thinking, we're not that obtrusive, you know? And it's a public waterway. The Scataqua River is a public waterway, and boats are on it. So we're working on boats, but it's the same product that's using the river, so there are no different chemicals. There's gas, you know, oil, but people are using the water, is what I'm saying. And the regional impact, I don't feel is, is... And the regional impact, I don't feel is, is huge, because we're not dumping, we're, we're just running boats on the river, just like everyone else. So I don't know if that makes sense to you?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the, down beyond your property, where the boats go into the water, the public, uh, docking place?
Yes.
Um, is that just kayaks, or do motorboats go in there as well?
Motorboats go in there as well. We'll see. And, and my last point is, and, and I know people are concerned about contamination, but yet, this weekend, everyone was swimming in the river. And if they were that concerned with us dumping in the river, why would they swim in the river in danger themselves? I swim in there. Everybody swims in it, so...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any, unless any burning issue?
Can I say something before you close?
Close the public hearing, yes.
Um, I, I read, after the attorney brought it to the board's attention, I read the section on regional impact, and it says, um, "Development of regional impact means any proposal before a local land use board, which in the determination of such land use board, could reasonably be expected to impact on a neighboring municipality because of factors such as, but not limited to, and one of them is proximity to aquifers or surface waters, which transcend municipal boundaries." So it's really up to the board to decide, but that would be taken into consideration. Um, and then the other things I just wanted to mention was, you know, as I said before, after reading through much of this information and, and reading through the minutes from last month, it seems like a number of the, um, concerns that were brought up by individuals had to do more with site plan issues rather than zoning. Um, and if, and I wasn't sure, when I was reading all of that, if, in fact, this was looked upon as home occupation or if it needed to get site plan approval. So if it does need to get site plan approval, I think a lot of those issues will be scrutinized by the planning board. Um, both boards can put restrictions on their approvals. Um, so if they offered up not having to do any oil changes or anything like that, that certainly can be a restriction as a condition of approval. I drove down there tonight on my way home and actually pulled right in the driveway, and I was very impressed with the cleanliness of, of the property. I, it, I would have never known there were, there was anything going on there, never mind, uh, boat business. I think, um, the shrink wrap disposal that was mentioned by someone, I think it was more environmental, not maybe that you were burying it or doing whatever, but I think there was a concern that the product itself is not environmentally friendly.
Can I answer that? Um, I called the company, uh, Dr. Shrink, who actually manufactures the product, and what the gentleman said, I actually followed the email off the dark.
And, and we have that.
You have that.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a very desirable product for reuse. Um, he basically told me that it was a virgin plastic, and, uh, they have no problem with reselling all this virgin plastic to make Coke bottles or whatever it was.
Mm-hmm.
Very, very recyclable.
Okay. So now that I found out you do send it back, I didn't, I didn't realize that. Um, and then the only other thing was, I think if the board does consider approving this, and if it does go to the planning board, I think both boards need to look at best management practices for this particular type of business being in such close proximity to the river, um, and making sure that, that those things are, um, adhered to and, and, uh, you know, checked on by submitting reports and things, as far as if he is allowed to, to do the oil and the cleaning of the boats and all of that. I think that there's definitely a way, um, to make sure that it's taken care of properly.
Okay.
That was it.
All right. Um, which Joanne reminded me, which is a very good point. Uh, and I had put a thing due, we want, as a board, we made a decision on the, no regional impact. Do we want to readdress that before we close the public hearing? Any impetus based on what the attorney provided, any pseudo rehearing, rehearing request on that item? And...
Can we, can we make it a condition?
Uh, I'm not sure how we can make it a condition on a statement, if there's impact.
Well, if, it, well, if we... If we deliberate, and let's say we, we deny the, the variances, then we don't need a regional impact. But if we deliberate and we seem to be going forward in approving it with conditions, can it be also based upon, um...
The regional decision that we've made?
It, it's either regi-, it's either a development of regional impact or it isn't.
Correct.
Not, it does not depend on what your decision is gonna be, because it affords a local municipality and the Regional Planning Commission an interested party status where they can participate in these proceedings. So you need, you've already made that decision. If you want to revisit it, then this public hearing would need to be continued to the next month to allow for noticing. But, uh, it should not be dependent on what the decision is gonna be.
Is it appropriate to, to take the attorney's comment and make that a, as they claim, as a request for rehearing on that item? Could we, is it appropriate to readdress that item tonight to determine if we think we erred on that determination?
If you feel you erred on it, I, I believe you could go back and, and, um, choose to continue the public hearing subject to that notification.
Right, right, okay. So, with that...
You, when you first, um, got the application and you reviewed the issues for, um, regional impact, you determined it didn't have, correct?
Correct.
And you stand by that?
I do, because when you look at it, is, is the proposal before the land use board, such, um, could be reasonably expected to impact on a neighboring municipality because of factors such as, and then you've got all those factors, and proximity to aquifers and surface waters. And those aquifers, well, the surface water does transcend to the Manchester border. But is it, is it a use that could reasonably be expected to impact on Manchester? I made the determination that it was not.
Okay.
But you could always...
Is that, is that a, um, an issue that could be, eh, um, an issue for rehearing?
Yeah, that could, yeah, because the argument would be that, would be that the Manchester and, uh, the Regional Planning Com- Commission should have been notified.
Okay.
Well, I, I, uh, I, um, I prefer that we take a, a vote on it to determine whether or not, um, we want to, well...
Are we deliberating, or are we...
No, I'm just, we haven't closed the public hearing yet, but we're looking at... I, I don't want to close a public hearing if we determine and change our minds that there is a regional impact, because then we would just leave the public hearing open.
No, we could, we could still have the public hearing. Could we still continue the public hearing?
Yeah, we would continue it.
We'd continue it, yeah.
But I...
We can continue it tonight, not continue it another day.
I would suggest, at the moment you make that determination, that you need to do notification.
Yeah.
And stop the public hearing as the process?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It'd be best if I left it open, we noticed, then they can come back and provide their piece. We don't have to start over again, or any, or anything like that. So, I, I recommend, well, any other comments? Because I, I think we could, I think we should take a vote on it.
I do, too.
To determine there is any regional impact.
All right. Any comments, then?
I make a motion that this does not have a regional impact.
I'll second.
Yeah, and I, I leap on when, uh, when that was put back in front of us, and it was that reasonable expectation thing, uh, that Joanne cited, Kathy reiterated, Derek read, that this business in whatever form, it's not expected that they would be dumping, expected that there'd be flow into the river, expected that they'd be running into it. That's, if it happens, that's one thing, but it's not expected to happen. So that's my comment. Any other comment?
All right, there's a first and a second, that it still does not have a regional impact. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That's five. All right, there we go. Okay. Thank you, Derek, on that, for that clarification. So, um, I think we're ready to close the public hearing, unless there's any other questions or comments. Okay, with that, we're gonna close the public hearing. Thank you for all the comments that were provided in this application. Um, the question now is, do we deliberate now or later?
I would suggest that we hold deliberation until later, given the other items on the public hearing scheduled tonight and the fact that this is likely to be an involved deliberation, I'd recommend that we hold it.
Okay, any other comment?
I agree.
Later part of the meeting.
I'm willing. I don't think, I don't, I don't, I personally don't think we need to delay the deliberations, and I don't think it needs to be too lengthy, um, unless we make it that way.
I'm ready to go. You're, you're the breaker now. Which one do you want to do? Go now, or wait?
I've got some questions for Derek on this that, that may take some answering. But, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll swing either way.
I think with the crowd here, we're on TV with the attorneys, I would recommend that we do it now.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine with me.
Because they probably wouldn't want to stay and listen, so...
I know, I've been in that second position sometimes, though.
Well, any comments, motions? You had questions of Derek.
Yeah, I do. Um, in, in light of the, uh, P R L A C, to what extent, and I'll reference in the matrix, where it talks about the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy-two. To what extent, and I'm assuming that because the town adopted this as their policy, to what extent, um, does the guidelines of the Clean Water Act of seventy-two become policy for Goffstown? And if there are criteria that we need to abide by with operating a boat repair facility this close to the waters, what are they? Do we know that? Do we know any of this information?
I, I don't have that information right now.
In, in some of this, it, it does talk about, you know, protecting the water.
Would the Shoreline Protection Act now supersede that?
I'm assuming if it has become law, then yes.
Well, the, the Shoreland Protection Act was in place and in effect at the time that the Scataquag River watershed plan was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. It has since been modified.
Well, it was written in ninety-nine and adopted in two thousand
Yes.
as, as the criteria that the boards in Goffstown will, will follow.
It was adopted by the planning board.
It was adopted by the planning board in two thousand.
And prior to that, prior to the Shoreline Protection Act, was there, was it up to, like, communities to have, like, a Scataquag water river protection organization to protect the shorelines in lieu of a state shoreline protection act? What do we have, what do we have that protected our shorelines before the state? I don't think there was anything the state really had that protected the shorelines.
I'm not sure at the state level.
Right.
Uh, P R L A C is an advisory board. For every designated river has an advisory board made up of community members along that river. So that's, they're not really an enforcement, so they, they would never have enforced it. I don't know if there were federal regulations that would have applied, and I don't know what the state regulations before shoreland were, to be honest with you.
Well, let's, can we cut to the chase on these questions? Uh, what of the five variance criteria would these questions and answers apply to? Because that's what we need to answer, too. We have five questions in front of us.
I, I realize that. Um, as far as the, the use of the property, in that... I think it's important that regardless of whether or not there's an intentional spillage of chemicals or anything like that, there should be some type of protection facility on the property in the event of an emergency, whether it be another fifty-year flood, or, or, um, there's electricals on the boat that could, you know, and God forbid any of this happens, but say there's a fire and chemicals wind up in the ground and in the river. If we're gonna allow a commercial operation on the river, whether it's downstream, upstream, or in the middle of town, other commercial operations are, that are adjacent to the water, are required to have certain protections in place for that water.
How's that a zoning board versus a planning board issue?
And how would, how is that, some of those could be other regulatory agencies as well, not just the land use or planning?
Because there's a lot of rules out there.
I realize that.
We don't provide jurisdiction over most of them. We have a defined set in the zoning ordinance. Now, we like to delve into those things and be concerned, and we've done that in the past, and we've looked at them.
Yeah, I, I think in, in a case like this, it's our responsibility as a zoning board.
I would have to...
I'm, I'm, and I'm saying this because we're getting no guidance from the planning board on it. They've obviously stepped away from it.
Oh, well, no, go ahead.
No, they haven't, I would say, I wouldn't say they've stepped away from it. Quite often, they'll offer us no comment, knowing that it's gonna come back to them, and they can't, if you're prejudiced, or have predisposition, you know, show any predisposition to a complication.
They have their set of rules to play by. They're waiting for us to, to say yes or no. And then if it's a yes, they get involved and make it look pretty and make it work for the town. Zoning ordinances, planning ordinances, they probably deal with, you know, the EPA and the rules and all of these things. They look at as well. We look at...
Apologize for being a bit of an environmentalist, but I just think that we have some responsibility towards this.
I, I think there is responsibility there, eh, eh, because, uh, fifteen three one one says, "The variance will not result in an increase in flood heights, additional threats to public safety, or extraordinary public expense." And I do feel that, um, the point that Ed is, is making falls under that variance fifteen three one one for possible additional threats to public safety, um, because of the, um, that possibility of hazardous waste going into the river. And, and I think you, I think that could fall under that. However, um, however, I think, yeah, there's a, there's a bird somewhere. But I, I think that, um, some of, of those issues can be conditioned, if that is the direction the board would like to go into, um, for issues for, to present to the planning board, to let them know that this was, this was important in our decision, and public safety, we were paying attention to, and that was part of the variance. And that's how I'm reading it.
Okay.
I would just caution our conditions, that if, if we head in that direction, that any conditions are not...
Restrictive.
Uh, stepping on the toes of the planning board.
Correct.
We can't be doing their job.
Correct.
Yeah, I think there's a very fine line. We have to really watch that.
Yeah.
Okay? Did, I, I didn't, I don't mean to cut you off, and you're interested in the questions, but I'm trying to make sure we focus on the five questions that we have to answer.
Well, I, I understand that, and, and I'm, I'm looking at that.
Excuse me for a minute.
Like I say, the envi- environmentalist in me is, is kind of coming out, and, uh, I, I feel that these are legitimate concerns, and they need, need to be addressed.
Okay. Any other, uh, comments, motions?
Well, a, a sort of a question and a comment as to how we stand in the section that they're looking for a variance from three dot seven dot one about multiple principal uses on a single lot. I'm wondering if the case we're all familiar with from about a year ago about multiple principal uses, we're getting into the same territory. As I read three dot seven dot one, allows multiple principal uses for non-residential, multifamily on a single lot. Looking at our, um, table of principal uses, vehicle repair, the very things that are looking from, looking for variances from our prohibited activities in that zone. Now, the way, looking at three dot seven dot one, multiple principal uses consonant with the table of principal uses, so... the table of principal uses, so I'm, I'm a little bit leery there that we're getting into a question of, you've got a commercial operation, you've got a single-family residence on a house.
Two primary uses.
Hmm?
Two primary uses.
Yeah, that, that's exactly my question, are we dealing with two, two primary uses?
We are, and they admit that, because in the first variance, they're requesting of the five is for that. And that's how I understood how Derek wrote it, is requested variance from section three dot seven dot one of the zoning ordinance to allow the mixed non-residential and single-family use. So, I think they do make note that they are requesting a variance from, from that statement that you just read from.
As I say, I hadn't, the way I read that, the variance could be for something that was within the bounds of the table of principal uses, but we're, you know, we're getting right back into the territory where we were about a year ago about.
Yeah.
Two primary uses on a single lot.
The landscaping business in the house, right? I went back and read those minutes. So Derek, that is what they're asking for in the first variance.
That's one of the variances that they're requesting, yes.
A business and primary residence on the same lot.
Yes.
Okay. So, with, they are covering it in what we would approve or disapprove of. Anything else on that line?
No.
Any other comments?
Where are we with this?
Motion? We're just making comments right now, any, we, we already made a motion, are ready to vote? We did that all while you stepped out for thirty seconds.
To listen to the bird coming through the speaker. I did want to make a comment about this, because I do feel that a small boat repair business at this location would cause a hardship to the property owners and the properties, I would say the property owners around in, in the surrounding area. I think that, I, I honestly, I honestly get the feeling from, from this location that the boat repair business, the small business that Mr. Roy here, probably was there before many of the residents that are there now. And the reason that this was there was because the, this area in Goffstown was originally developed as summer cottages and three-season locations for recreation area. People, we've heard even from just Manchester came and had a camp over there, and they'd come over there on the weekend, and I believe it was Mr. Roy's family that even said they, they did that too. So, this is an area which is predominant, was predominantly founded in Goffstown for recreation and riparian pleasures, meaning pleasures that people enjoy living next to a river. What also comes into my mind is that, first of all, it helps the people that have boats there. As people have cars to travel on a road, people who live on a river have boats to travel a river. And this business developed because these people had a neighborhood boat repairer who would repair their boats, and they wouldn't have to drag them all over Goffstown or Manchester to any other place. And if there was an issue that it was important, that somebody needed the river for whatever the importance was, it was, it could be done timely from Mr. Roy now through Mr. Buckland. I think, however, what, what strikes me as more important out of everything is the fact that this area has a hardship and that it does flood. We know it flooded the Mother's Day flood, we know it flooded in April, we know it flooded this past spring. The hydraulics are, are high, they're very high. Everybody realizes that water level and water tables have increased substantially, I would even say since I've been here in the nineteen seventies. And because this particular area of the river floods so dramatically, heavy, heavy rainstorms, and not only hundred-year floods, but heavy, heavy rainstorms, if these people who live in this area need to get out, they need their boats to get them out of there at some times. And we have had, we have seen letters from the Board of Selectmen thanking Mr. Buckland, and whether it be Mr. Buckland or, or another person that had this particular issue, the fact of the matter remains is that it's a dangerous area to live in without a boat because of the flooding that results from heavy, heavy rainstorms. And I would think that from a safety issue, having a small, a small boat repair place down there, it only makes it safer for the residents that do live there. So, I do feel it would be a hardship on the particular area that was founded, and I, and I, I do feel that it would be, it would be more of a hardship for this type of a business not to be next to a river or a water. I, I have seen boat re, boat marinas, this is not a marina, that exist off of the water because they sell boats. I have seen, people drive their boats there, people take them, there'd be marinas that are on water, there are marinas that aren't on water. These are small, we're talking small boats here, and I just, again, I feel that from a safety issue from this area, that it would be a hardship if that boat repair place was not there for the residents, because that is why they moved there.
They moved there for the river.
They moved there for the river. And, and that, we all know they were three seasons before, and then they allowed them to become four seasons and giving them building permits for, for full season residential homes. They have other issues down there. I think I read in the minutes about somebody mentioning the sewer down there. Well, being very much aware of it myself, that concern should be put into this area as, as much of attention, if not more, than what's been put into this, this particular Buckland issue. Sewer and flooding don't mix, and lack of sewer and flooding don't mix, but that's a whole nother issue. I, I don't, I don't discredit the fact that there is issues and concerns of contamination. I mean, that, that, that is definitely a concern of mine, and I, but I do feel that the drainage system or how they would handle the contamination is actually a planning board, site plan review issue, not ours. I think it's ours to be, be attentive to, but I do think that, that's a planning board issue. I do think that the dumping is a planning board issue. I think the shrink wrapping possibly is, but I'll tell you what I think the fear is here, that I, that I get a sense from the people that I hear talking. I think that there is a, a just concern from neighbors that because it started as a small, small boat repair place by Mr. Roy years and years ago, that they have seen an increase and an escalation in, in what this business is doing. He's gone from small boat repair to maybe some motor vehicle repair, and now he's gone and, and it's escalated now where he has boats on there, that he's shrink wrapping. And I can understand that concern, I do feel that's an escalation in the size of the business that was there in the beginning. I think that's up to the planning board to perhaps decide what the size, what the drainage is going to occur with this particular piece of property. But I, again, feel that, that as, as, as a, as a business or a type of business that, or whether this land should be looked to, to home as a type of business, I think it would be a hardship not to allow this to be there for predominantly public safety issues. And that differentiates it from a lot of other reasons.
All right, I understand what you're saying.
Good.
Kayla, anything?
I think what you, what you were summarizing, in effect, actually goes to the variance not being contrary to the public interest, because it benefits especially those that are immediately local to the area.
Mm-hmm.
And others that do happen to come down to use it. And the area, as far as we heard from testimony, any boats that come down to the, that area are not all going to see Mr. Buckland. Some of them are going down to the, to the.
Public way.
Launch at the public way down there. So, all that traffic is not necessarily going to him. I, I have been down there a couple of different times to see the property, and like Joanne, I found it to be very clean, very neat, very well cared for, and you wouldn't even know that it was, that there was a business there. When I was down there today, I saw one boat going in, it was being pulled, it was being pushed in, pulled in, whatever, on a truck, on its trailer, being backed into the water. And I think the boat ramp, as they described it, how it slopes into the river versus being a drop-off that most people have, I think that lends to the uniqueness of the property somewhat, because it facilitates the boats getting into the water. And it, they have the ramp that other people might not be able to get because of the Shoreland Protection Act. So, I think that lends to the uniqueness of the property as well. Let me see what else I have. And I think it is consistent, as, as the attorney Galant had said, I think it was his, in the, in the application anyway, it said it was consistent with the recreational character of the area and the public interest, and I have to agree with that. Let's see, what else did I have to say? I know there've been a lot of comments about increased traffic, which is, I think, is that one of the concerns we have for the variance?
Yes.
But I can't say that traffic will increase, I can't say I'm convinced that traffic would increase, because the business is already there, and the traffic that they have is what they have, what they're going to see, because the business is already established, so the variance is after the fact, so I don't see that the traffic being an issue as far as an increase in traffic. As far as the values of the property are concerned, I wish I could remember the wording that was used last month when we were here. But the appraisal that was done for the Hobbs, I felt was questionable, because it was done with property that was up on Mast Road, it was a very incompatible area, it was, the homes that he compared it to were capes. And I'm not saying this just as a blind resident or property owner, I used to sell real estate, so although I wasn't an appraiser, I did a lot of market analyses. And I would have to agree with the appraisal that was done by, I forget the name of the man who did it, but the one that was done on behalf of the Bucklands. So, I'll leave it at that for now.
Michael Sherlock.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to walk through just what I thought of each one of the variance criteria, I won't say which way, although it probably would reflect on how I said. Regarding contrary to public interest and together with the spirit of the ordinance, I found that this being an R-two residential neighborhood, that the applicant, well, this neighborhood has no similar mixed residential, non-residential properties in the area. No examples were given by the applicant, so this would be the first in the neighborhood. The applicant talked about in section two point three point four of the zoning ordinance using the word recreational, and they made a big part of their case regarding spirit of the ordinance, but in the applicant, but the way the applicant, but that zoning ordinance reference does not mean what the applicant desires. Mr. Buckland supports recreational use, but in and of itself, it is not recreational, his business is not recreational, supports recreational use. Three, this business has been reluctantly defined and scoped. We don't know what we would be approving, or if there are any limits or reasonable limits that we would place on this business. Once we opened it up, who follows up on what specific item the maintenance he's doing, et cetera. And with this lightly defined business, as he stated in his testimony, we don't know the risks faced. Mr. Buckland stated he wouldn't use hazardous materials, but boat maintenance and repair and winterizing requires at least some handling and management of waste runoff. At some point, you're going to, you're going to manage this stuff. And if you don't, what kind of business are you? It's very restrictive on what kind of business that is. So, that was contrary to public interest or spirit of the ordinance. Regarding substantial justice, I believe granting of the variance would reward the applicant and put unknown risks to the Goffstown residents. Not so much as what's being dumped in the river, because I think all of that stuff is, is a red herring. I think it's just, it's part of the business, again, goes back to the scoping of the business, what are we approving? Yep, go ahead and do a business. Okay, how big, how often, how many employees, at what point does, you know, the site planning, they're going to say, okay, now it's a business, you need two parking spots, you've got to deal with this kind of traffic, how many employees can you have? None of that stuff has been come forward, none of it has been identified.
That would all be planning.
Absolutely, I understand.
Doesn't have to be identified here.
I understand, I understand, but I'm just saying, we have this in mind, it's going to be like it always has been. Well, like it always has been has been variable, all right? So, they've been, and they've tried to put it in a box of what they're trying to identify, what it is. It's not written on a piece of paper, it's no guarantee what that business would be. Again, it goes back to, this would be the first in the neighborhood of this. Okay, so we're on the substantial justice. So, the second item under substantial justice, no proof was provided that this business had to be run from the residential property.
I can't stand it.
It doesn't seem to be a requirement of this business in general. I looked on Google, I looked, I saw there's a business by name in Concord, not on the river. There's another one, I believe, in Manchester area, not on the river. So, that's why I asked the question, do you have to be on the river to do this business? No, especially when he starts describing installation of stereos, wiring, you know, we're not dumping, you know, we're not cleaning engines, we're not changing engines, we're not responding to people that are on the river to, to make their stuff work, it's more of a enhancement of the boat. So, again, does it have to be on the river? And the fact that of these other businesses, okay, you do something with a boat, you bring it to the river. Okay, seems reasonable, that it could be done. So, and, and there was no proof of any loss to the, to the applicant. I'm going to lose fifty thousand dollars a year because I, I have to, I have to move, I have to go somewhere else to do this. There was no proof of any monetary loss, business loss, loss of any kind, by saying that we, that we didn't allow him to do it here, that he had to go somewhere else, just like other commercial businesses and commercial entities.
Peter, formulate my thought.
Regarding the values of surrounding property, I thought to both sides made their cases, I think the applicant's expert showed that no current impact, which I thought was very reasonable to, I thought, even despite my questions and not understanding that evening, but rereading the, the testimony and the letters from the applicant's property expert was very reasonable. But I think the butters also had a, a reference in theirs that spoke to what possibly could happen. So, yeah, maybe it wasn't this neighborhood, but a neighborhood that has mixed residential and businesses that they, that you can identify that there are impacts due to business. That was their point. I, I don't think they were making a point that this one specifically had an impact. Now, two letters did come in to say, we're not going to buy the properties if this goes in. Well, that's, that's an immediate impact, whether it's founded, unfounded, if the relatives, I don't know, but two letters did come in saying that we won't buy because of this business goes in.
Well, those letters did come in. I, I bear in mind that one of them was from somebody that's related to the, to the Hobbs.
Yep.
And the other one, Falco, Falceo, whatever, however you pronounce it, although she said that she might not consider living here, her, her ending statement was that she intends to stay in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
With her child, so. with her child, so statements were contradictory.
Yeah, and this is, I think, isn't as big a deal as has been made. Hardship is always the big crux of, when you start looking at the five criteria. And it starts right off, that you start looking at things, and we ask these questions multiple times, but I find that the applicant did not demonstrate, right from the beginning, the uniqueness of their property compared to his neighbors or the area. Having the property be a good location to conduct a business does not qualify. Specifically, in our training that we receive, it talks about, oh, just because the property's set up exactly, in this case, there's a boat ramp there, and it's got good access from the road, does not make that a uniqueness of the property. It has to be, why is that property burdened by the zoning ordinance unfairly compared to other properties in the area? Through testimony, I asked a number of people, and they came up, how big is this property? Is it bigger than yours, same as yours? That's the same. Oh, it's bigger, it's nicer, all those things. But why is their property different that it's unfairly burdened by the zoning ordinance? I didn't find how it was unfairly burdened. Just because they wanted a business, and the zoning ordinance says you can't, isn't just the reason by itself. You have to say, why is your property unique? And why it wasn't fair. And the last item there is, and because of no special conditions of the property, yeah, you could do this use there, but it's not reasonable. And the last item in hardship in 5B, Richard talks about, if you've got nothing else you can do with this property, you need to let it go. Well, obviously, they're living on this property, so those are my comments, looking through the criteria.
Now that Kevin has said pretty much everything, the one aspect of it that troubles me is, and I think that perhaps the appropriate issue for a zoning discussion, is going to be the scale of what's done here. I mean, taking Mr. Buckland at his word, that this is what his business is, this is what it's going to be, fine. But that's not what the variances are going to say. I think that any variance needs to have conditions that are sufficiently restrictive that, okay, Scott Buckland is not always going to own this property, but these regulations travel with the property, so a subsequent owner who comes in has got all the variances they need for a full-scale commercial marine operation here. I think that, you know, there needs to be limitations of scale, whether it's the number of boats on the property, the types of services that are offered. I think Kathy hit a point before, I think as far as hazardous waste, effluent and stuff like that, those are both DES and/or planning issues. But I think in terms of determining the scale and the scope of the operation that we're going to allow on that property is really a key issue for us. I think Kevin hit a number of other points very, very well, but that's what has struck me all along. We need to look down the road, and I think I've heard, what I've heard in testimony from the various of Butters seems to be, it's expanded some, they're fearful of further expansion, further traffic in the neighborhood, so I think one of the things that we need to look at is how we might limit the scale of what is allowed there, if we're to allow it at all.
All right, can I hear your comments, motions?
We could, I mean, if we go that way, we could specify that if there was to be an expansion of the business, that it either needed to come back to the zoning board and be reconsidered.
But the question is, how do you define the business and what would constitute an expansion of the business? More boats allowed on-site, different services being allowed? When we've had nothing very specific of it.
I think a lot of that is planning issues. Ours is just land use, does he get to do it? And at this level, at a higher level, whatever. But as far as the number, if you're gonna limit the number of boats, or the types of boats, or the services, or this, or that, I think that's more to be a planning issue. I mean, he did offer that he would not use the hazardous materials, do the oil changes and use of fuel and things like that, and we could consider that and put that as a condition, since it was something he brought to the table. But a lot of the things are planning issues. Ours is the land use issue.
That's why I'm never a fan of conditions, because then you start saying, is it really?
Yeah, if you put too many conditions, it's gonna come back.
Right.
You know, it's, you've got to be careful on the amount of conditions that you put on a land use.
Yet I'd be reluctant to approve without some sort of conditions, because I think
Yeah, there can be some. I would just use caution on the number of, not that there is a magic number, but use caution on the number of conditions and which ones they are.
Kathy?
Well, I was just going to say that I did feel that this was a unique parcel of property because it has existed before the Shoreline Protection Act. And that in order for something like this to, a piece of property like this to exist in that area, it would now fall under the Shoreline Protection Act from the beginning and from the get-go. I also think that when we speak of boat repair places, or, as you mentioned, being not on the river and not, and being profitable or successful, again, this is a flood area, which makes this particular piece of property important in that area, and I think it would do substantial injustice to not keep something down there because of the proximity to the river, because of the hazard of the river with flooding, and because these boats that these residents own, these vehicles actually become their safety vehicles in case of flooding. And if the floods were coming, and somebody had a boat, and they were told to evacuate, and the floodwaters came, they had a day or two, you know, these things happen. And somebody said, I can't get my engines started, and Scott's down there, or a small boat repair place, and I'm with everybody as far as the character, category, the size of this business is concerned. I certainly don't think a marina would be down there, nor, you know, he doesn't have docks down there, but he's in the docking business. So, he, I feel that this business and its character, which it is, he has, has been sized according to that which can be taken. But I do feel it would be a substantial injustice not to grant a variance because of the public safety issue.
Injustice to who?
I think it would be, I think it would be just a great injustice to, to
Would certainly be in the public's, public interest.
Great injustice in the public, to everybody, to the town.
But I'm gonna go back to the reasonable, just like we made a decision on the regional impact. Is that a reasonable occurrence that you're speaking of? That we're gonna get a 40-day flood, and, you know, and all of a sudden, everybody's gonna jump to their boats and need to start their boats to get out of there? I mean, that's, I mean, is that what we're talking about, or?
Well, one thing, it would be reasonable that a oil platform would fall over in the middle of Gulf of Mexico.
We have roads to get out to where we're at.
Well, they did not have roads in the Mother's Day flood, and that was a hundred-year flood. And then the following April, we had another hundred-year flood.
Where is this in the, in the five criteria that we're speaking?
Is this a floodplain?
Yeah, where is what you're saying, that it's a substantial justice and a public interest and a, you know, I know what you're saying, it just, how do I make that fit in the zoning ordinance?
Okay, Mr. Roy had his business down there a long time before a lot of these residents did. And I'm sure a lot of the people that moved in there, moved there because they had boats, and there was a little small boat repair business down there where they could take them to. So they had their boats and they went there. And they've done that
But it is what you're just
Since 1955.
Well, we've argued that it's not
No, we argued that it wasn't continuous since 1955.
So it hasn't been relied on for acts of God for that imperative time.
But there have been people that have been down there, and it has been. So I think it would be a substantial injustice to the people that live there to remove something that has been there for so long, and a lot of those people have moved into that area. And some of those people have moved into the area as the, in the end of the 1990s, and knew it was there, but yet are here as public complaining about it.
How do we make that argument and stand up in Superior Court if this gets appealed when the applicant themselves didn't make the argument that you're describing? How do we, they didn't make that, they didn't make that reason. They didn't come to say, oh, we've been invested, we're a community partner, we provide support, we're there in times of need.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I do feel that they did say that. I do feel that they did say that. Not only did they say that sometimes in the last, maybe not in the last meeting, but in the prior, when we were here before, yes, I do feel that they did say that.
But even in this business that's described by the applicant, they're not gonna be able to fix all issues that would come up to them. Our motor won't start, I need to put oil in it, sorry, can't put oil in it for you. So, sorry, next one, I wanna put a stereo system in, oh, can do that for you. But, so I'm just trying to, you know, stick to the five criteria.
So am I.
And how do we make a decision on these? The hardship is the biggest one, what is unique about this property? What, it's like to get Okay, make a motion.
Ed, do you have, I didn't hear anything from you.
I respectfully disagree. I don't, I don't think that, especially in a time of flood, today, I would run up and down that river all day long. But when the water's rushing down that river, coming past that dam and down that river, I wouldn't wanna be navigating it. I'd be heading for dry ground, I wouldn't be using the water as a means of escape. I've been around that river enough in times of flood and in good times like we're having right now, where, A, I don't think, I'd wanna be using the river as a means of escape, number one. Number two, if we're talking about approving with these limitations, where he's not allowed to work on engines, he's not allowed to use chemicals of any kind, then you're talking marine radios, electronics and things like that, which in a time of flood aren't gonna do you any good anyway. If you can't get the boat running, I wouldn't wanna be sitting in it trying to get somebody to come and get me on a radio. I'd be trying to head for high ground. So I, as much as I see your point about how it would be convenient to have an operation on the river like that, the things that he may or may not be allowed to work on are gonna have no bearing on an emergency situation on that river. So I can't quite stand with you on that.
The, I just wanna clarify, when you said using the river as an escape route, no, I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about when the roads flooded, and the roads flooded down there, and they had to walk the people out. We all saw it on the front page of the paper, that there is possibilities of the road flooding, and I'm not talking of them going up the river. I'm talking of escaping through the roadways, that's all. That was the difference there. And as far as, you know, if there was, if we knew that there was going to be flood issues that were coming through there, I would think that if there was a boat that wasn't working, I'd fix it, if they needed the boat to get out. But, I mean, limiting, I hear what you're saying, but
I think it's kind of an apples or oranges argument. Is the size of the boat, you're talking about taking people out up the street, and is not the size of the boat that Mr. Buckland is working on? The stuff he's doing is probably somewhat bigger than that.
I don't believe so. I think that most of the boats we've talked about with Mr. Buckland have probably been more the size of a fishing boat and
That's what I've seen down there.
Nothing but fish, little boats, like kayak-sized, riverboat-sized. He doesn't, I haven't seen any large boats down there. Have you been down there, Lynn?
One that was in his driveway today is pretty good size, and maybe his, I don't know, but it's not a, it's not a small boat.
Any motions? All right, I'm gonna try mine first. I'm gonna make a motion to deny the variances that it is contrary to public interest and the spirit of the ordinance. As I stated earlier, I imagine you have most of my comments in there. That it would not do substantial, not do substantial justice, and that the applicant did not demonstrate hardship. And I referenced my comments that I made earlier.
And I'll second.
Any comments? There's been a first and a second.
I can't say I agree with it. I don't think it's contrary to the public interest. I don't think it's outside the spirit of the ordinance. As far as substantial justice, where do you see that it does not do substantial justice?
My biggest, I had two items. One, in that granting the variance would reward the applicant and put unknown risks to the Goffstown residents, and the fact that
Reward the applicant.
To continue a business that they have. It's always easier to continue something that you always, that you have than it is to initiate it.
So, in effect, are you saying that
Am I punishing him?
For
I'm not, I'm trying not to do that, but
Because he's trying to come forth, everything from the past, it's like, this is a clean slate.
Yep.
So, that should just, the fact that the, you know, the past issue should not even be an issue for tonight. It's just a clean slate, this business, these criteria.
Other than it's always easier to continue than it is to deny. It's always hard to look at somebody in the face and say, you can't do this anymore. That's hard to do.
Yes, it is.
So we mentally have a, we fall back to the, let's let him continue. I would say we mentally do that, so.
I wouldn't have a problem doing it if I felt like it wasn't suitable. But I do think that, I think it would be doing, I don't think it would be doing any harm to the community, to the neighborhood, to the Butters, to allow it to continue, and I think it would do more, greater harm to him, to have it discontinue. So I think there is
And that's where the second point I have is, that there's no proof been presented on what that harm is. Has not proved, has not shown that it'd be a monetary loss if he had to move this business somewhere else if we were to disapprove it? Or if a business was closed, that he would lose his livelihood? I mean, we make assumptions.
He has stated that's his livelihood, so if the business was closed, he would either lose it
How much?
Or he would have to, or he would, does it matter how much? He would lose his livelihood. That's his livelihood, he would lose it, period. Or he would have to go elsewhere and then pay the overhead that's incorporated with that, which
But if other people already do that? So his neighbor wants to open a boat business, where do they, where do they open it? Somewhere else and have an overhead, right?
That's why his property is unique, because he has that ramp where he can do it to facilitate it, and all of that. His neighbor doesn't have that, because now
I make the point that just because your property is suited for it, doesn't mean it's right for it. That's under the hardship criteria. And I'll read it right from here.
So you have to argue that one, that's going to court too.
So, it says, under special conditions of the property, it is not enough to demonstrate that the property would be difficult to use for other purposes, or that it is uniquely suited for the applicant's proposed use. Even if those facts are present, the applicant still must demonstrate that the property is different in a meaningful way from other properties in the area. The property must be burdened by the zoning restriction in a manner that is distinct from other similarly situated property. So, just because it's uniquely suited for its use doesn't mean it's a hardship, that it meets the hardship criteria.
We had an earlier application that we reviewed where there was a business that had been located there prior to them getting variances or special exceptions to have it. And I was the only one that voted against it. And everybody else voted for it because it was a business that already existed. And everybody thought that it would be a hardship for him pretty much to end it. And I, I'm just curious as to how your thinking has changed from that.
Um, I don't recollect the case in that, but I, if that's how I voted, it, it is. But in this case, I look at it as, um, that these are the criteria and this is how I reviewed it. I'm, I'm smarter now. Every case that we face, every training session we go to, and every time I read the criteria. So, that's how I feel. I mean, we're going to take a vote and on one person with an opinion.
Now, what, when you say that he's not proven his hardship, what are the criteria that you're going by? In, in his application, they went by the special conditions of the property that, uh, because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes and the proposed use is a reasonable one.
Right, so what's the public purpose of the zoning ordinance as applied to this R2 district? It is that there's no businesses, right? And there's no commingling of a residence in a business? Or no sale of goods or no stuff?
That's why you request a variance, is to be able to do, do things that are generally not allowed.
Absolutely, but you, but you have to look at the variance. So what's the vari- uh, I'm sorry, you have to look at the zoning ordinance. So why do we have the zoning ordinance for that? Okay, it's to prevent encroachment of businesses, to, to allow, to make sure that you try protect a residential area, right? Yep, we can vary, we can, we can grant the variance. Fully support, we can grant a variance. But that's why you have to look at the property. Why this property shouldn't be burdened by the zoning ordinance? You have to look at the property to say, why is this one different? Why should it not be? That we look at it to enforce that it stays residential? And most, and that's why when we approved the chickens, the twelve chickens, man, I was saying, why your property? Why can't everybody have chickens? She said, well, it's larger than other properties in the area. We have, uh, uh, buffer with trees. I mean, they talked about the property. Why is that property different than the other ones? That's the question. And this one, why is this property different? Oh, it's larger. Other people convinced it? It's not larger. Um, it's got a boat ramp. Okay, others can have boat ramps, maybe yes, maybe no. But just because you have a boat ramp doesn't mean it's a hardship, that the zoning ordinance doesn't apply to you. Again, we're looking at why is this land unique? And I have nothing. I got nothing. We've looked at other ones where we've-
Have you seen, have you been down to the property?
Yep, multiple times.
And have you walked on the property to see the boat ramp?
Not, I've seen it from the road, but-
Because that, that is not- That itself is unique compared to what other properties can get. And I, I consider that lending to the uniqueness of the property.
I have a plan here if anyone wants to look at it.
I, I, I mean, I'm going to reread that sentence. It is not enough to demonstrate that the property would be difficult to use for other purposes, or that it is uniquely suited for the applicant's proposed use. Oh, I have a ramp, I should be able to do this.
That, but that ramp makes the property unique.
It's unique, but isn't it-
And it makes it unique compared to the others, because the others can't do that now because of the shoreline protection.
The uniqueness speaks to hardship. Why is their property have a hardship on it that they need relief from? Right now, I don't know what they need relief from, other than it's the zoning ordinance, because I want to put a business in. It's not that I have too many trees, I have rivers, I have ledge, I have, um, you know, that- Here's, here's what we would be looking for for this property, which we've done for other cases where we've allowed multiple uses. Uh, Denise Herman, we allowed her to have greenhouses and sell, you know, have eggs and stuff. She proved that her property within two or three doors was other people's agricultural uses. Uh, and that her, that it was unnecessary hardship because her property was larger than the neighborhood, that, um, it was burdened because, it was mostly that it was burdened because she wanted to be able to do this and other properties right next to her doing it. And the application of the residential for that area wasn't, wasn't, uh, as, as, as critical because of, that it had the climate of a more agricultural area than, than this. So that's why I went back, the first statement I made, this is a residential area. You look around, there are no other businesses. The applicant made no references to other businesses in that area. Didn't say, oh, this person over here has one, so why can't I? By the way, so if we grant this one, somebody two doors down could say, there's a business over here, I want a business.
They might.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we have to understand that as well.
Right, I, I agree with that part.
So if somebody else came in and, and applied for a variance and for a business, would we say no because there are no other businesses around here?
That could be part- That's part of the argument, yeah. Uh, because you have to look at, I, okay, why, how I read the rules is, why is this property different from the others?
There's the ramp. And it is three or four times larger than the other properties that abut it, which would not be large enough to sustain a commercial business.
Is that largeness a burden on it?
Is the large a burden on, that's very open, what, what do you say?
Yeah, okay.
Is the largeness what?
I've made my point. I'm only talking in circles now. So-
I thi- I thi- I think that boat ramp, I, when we, 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 we're talking land, we're not talking business, remember? We're talking land.
Oh, yeah, I'm, that's all I'm talking.
I wish I could speak.
You can't, nor point fingers at anything either.
They appeal if you can.
His, his lot is quite a bit bigger by appearances on this map. It is quite a bit bigger than the others. Which does lend itself to having a business on it where others might not be able to fit it. And it's, size of the lot is something that you even said yourself, that is something that you consider when they say, when they request their variances. And the size of the lot is something that is, is unique. And this one, the lot size-
So when you look at this GIS map provided by the abutters. This one, there's no other lots of that same size on this map?
It's not that there's no other, but his-
There's no other lots that same size that has a boat ramp on it.
Okay, all right. See now how I interpret the, the zoning ordinance? So there's a motion right now to deny, and there's a second. Any other discussion before we take a vote on that motion? Okay, we're going to, all of those in favor of denying the variance, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Three, two. All right. That's it, anything else on that one, Derek? Good debate. Takes time. Let's take five minutes. Be back at nine oh five.
We need to thank everybody who's waiting so long.
Here we go. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for waiting for the last two hours to come to this point. Uh, thank you for letting us take a break as well. We're going to move on to the second item in our public hearings tonight, and it reads, Dennis Tappin, applicant, is seeking a variance to allow the replacement of an existing deck and stairway that does not conform to building setbacks. A variance is required because the replacement deck stairs will be located two feet from the front property line, whereas section four point three of the zoning ordinance requires a twenty-five foot front yard setback. And the replacement deck will be located approximately three feet from the side property line, whereas section four point three requires a fifteen foot side yard setback. A variance is also required because the building coverage on the lot with the replacement deck and stairw- stairway will be thirty-two point two percent, whereas section four point three provides a maximum building coverage of twenty-five percent. The property is located at twenty-seven South Mass Street, map thirty-four lot one, in the residential small business and office district. And then prior to any public hearings, the ZB needs to vote on regional impact.
Make a motion.
I'll give you first, second, any comments on regional impact? Okay, Len, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we should back out of that just a bit, we can, is, uh, Joanne up on this one?
Was this here before?
Uh, no. So what we're going to do, Len, thank you for your service on the last one, so you can be back and alternate, if that's okay? Listening and asking questions?
Or go warm up?
And Joanne, you're back on being a member. So I'm going to ask for your vote on the regional impact, Joanne.
Oh, I did vote, so.
Okay, so five, zero, zero. I know, because Len threw a vote in there too, so just in case we had to know.
We got an extra one just in case.
Just in case. So, um, before we move on, I just want to note that in the, Derek's list of items, he has a staff review that Goffstown Fire Department has provided comments to us. Uh, also that the application was not sent to the planning board for review. Uh, also not sent to the conservation commission. And then he talks about a butter notification, et cetera. So just make sure we note that the Goffstown Fire Department has comments here. So, who is speaking for the applicant? Please come forward, state your name.
I'm Dennis Tappin.
Okay.
Applicant.
All right, and please walk us through, um, you know, what we're most interested in is the variance criteria and what you want to do.
Sure, uh, I'm not sure if it's standard procedure, have you property or walked by the property or?
Um, that's, I know I've driven by it, uh, but it doesn't, isn't requirement. We have the materials as, as you presented, Derek.
Okay, uh, I mean, I guess I'll give you the, I'll give you the long story as short as possible. Um, along Prospect Street where my property, uh, one of my property lines lies, there's a retaining wall that's been in deteriorating shape for the past couple of years. Uh, and we're trying to get it replaced. As part of that, I have to take down, uh, the existing deck and stairs. And so, uh, in addition to that, there's also sort of this awning that's attached to the back of the house that was existing when I bought the property. Uh, I want to take that down as well. And then just for mostly aesthetics purposes, uh, just build a, you know, a conforming, decode somewhat better looking deck than what's currently, uh, what I currently bought the property with, so just a bit of an upgrade.
Okay, so anybody have any questions?
Is the deck going to be the same footprint as what's there? Is it going to be the same size, bigger, larger, smaller?
I, I mean, I have a sketch that I have as part of the application, I don't know if you saw it.
Yeah, we have that, I believe.
You have that, okay. So, uh, this sort of, like, again, this, what I, what I kind of find is like bizarre sort of awning on the back end of the house. Uh, and I wanted to just make the deck extend all the way through the back, uh, in lieu of having that awning. Because right now, the way the current deck is built, it's actually using that structure, which is, uh, kind of old as a footing for the deck, which, uh, I'm hoping to upgrade to something a little bit more sound. And just for aesthetics reasons, you know, there's, um, been some, just, it's an older house, there's some siding damage. Uh, so I just want to make sure I, uh, I ju- I just want to run the deck along the back length of the house. More, pretty much just for cosmetic reasons. More than any need for use.
When I was reading over your application, um, is there presently only one exit from the upstairs or one of, one of the-
No, this two, there's one in the front and this, this is the rear exit to the building. You'd end up eliminating an exit from the second floor, which I would assume is a safety issue if you don't have two exits from a second floor apartment.
So do you have two exits from a second floor apartment now?
Yeah, currently I do, yeah. The, it's still there, I haven't, I haven't torn anything down yet.
Okay.
And you will have two when it's done?
Uh, if you allow me the variance, yes.
Just making sure.
Any other questions?
On the, I'm, I'm looking at this sketch.
Yep.
And I'm looking at this.
The plot plan, yep?
You're right, the plot plan. Um, how does it wrap around the building on the plot plan? Just one, um, the stairs, the deck comes across the back where it says forty-five?
Yeah, so if the Prospect Street's here-
That's where the-
The stairs run along here and the deck would come across the back.
Okay, so the deck could come across the back and the stairs down here.
Yep. Did everyone, did everyone get that, my answer to this question?
Yes. So all the, the cross-hatched, um, area on this is new decking?
No, the, uh, cross-tatch area on this sketch is the current awning. It's just a shingled, um, overhang.
Okay, yeah, I see that now.
And then the, the, the thick line here is the exist- it will, will be the footprint of the deck and stairs. Stairs are going to, stairs are going to remain the same size.
The deck is going to basically double in size.
The deck is going to pretty much double in length, yeah.
And a little bit wider.
And a little bit wider. And it's a, it, if you look at the property, there's actually, this, right along, right along the line, there's a, there's another retaining wall that goes across here. Uh, and I just wanted to make sure, um, just for, again, kind of, only because the part of the awning was right up against the wall, but also, um, I'm, I'm probably overthinking it, but just for safety reasons, if I bring the deck all the way over to where the wall is, so that they're sort of in line parallel, there's sort of a fence there, so there's, you know, people can't, if they happen to come on my property, they wouldn't fall in. I guess that's probably overkill, but that was my thought process.
Okay.
So the retaining wall actually holds property, holds ground away from your property, not ground to your property? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, uh, well, yeah, it's my knowledge, yeah.
I think that's what I was saying.
So this sketch doesn't show the existing deck? The outline of the existing-
No, the existing de- the existing deck is this, uh, these are the slats of the deck, and then this is the existing stairs. This is the existing awning, and then the thick line is the proposed outline of what-
Okay.
What I would build.
How does that, I'm trying to orient from this, how does the stairway run? Is that something that comes across the back of the-
Down the side?
Yeah, comes down the side of the house, yeah, yep.
Comes down the side of the house, and then the awning just extends out and covers-
Just kind of covers, uh, you know, a small five-foot section of land up to the retaining wall. There's actually, uh, up to a retaining wall. That I didn't have diagrammed there.
It's like an inch shelter at some point here.
Yeah.
The, uh, the, the width of the stairs.
Yep.
Um, how, what is the, from the outer edge of the stair width to the proposed deck and stair outline, how much has that increased?
The width of the stairs?
This, on this, see this little area here?
Yeah.
How much is that?
Oh, six inches.
Six inches going towards?
Towards, towards, uh, towards the back of the property.
Towards the back of the property?
Yeah.
So you're increasing the, the deck from six inches from the existing stair outer wall? So you're-
No, I'm sorry, that's tw- I'm sorry, I'm looking at my other math. It's twelve, twelve inches, it's a foot.
That's a, you, so that's one foot?
Yep.
From four feet wide to five feet wide. And from how many feet long to how many feet long now? What are we doing, uh, from ten to twenty long?
From a hundred and, uh, from a hundred and sixteen inches to the full length nineteen one.
Ten feet to nineteen feet, roughly?
Yeah, ten feet to nineteen feet longer, but you're going one foot wider.
So your, your stairs in the back would be twenty feet, one inches from the uh, side lot, um, boundary, from the backyard boundary? No, two feet.
No, two feet.
Two feet, okay. And before it was three feet? To the stair?
Well, it was, yeah, it was three feet to the stairs or two feet to the existing awning that's there now.
Okay. Was the awning, um, supported by any poles or other structures, or does it just hang from the house?
Uh, there's a, uh, on this half, there's a small, I guess like a knee wall underneath the awning. It's holding up on one side. Uh, there's a, uh, on this half, there's a small, I guess like a knee wall underneath the awning, it's holding up on one side. And then there's a post, uh, on this end of it.
There's a post on the back end of it here?
Yeah, mhm.
So Derrick, obviously stairways, external stairways and decks count, of course, count against building coverage. That's no matter if they're on the ground level or above ground?
Correct.
Is that what, impermeable, impermeable surfaces type thing for?
No, cause we don't, we, our ordinance doesn't count, uh, sidewalks or driveways or any other impervious surfaces, simply building footprint.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for the applicant?
Where was the retaining wall? I just, I couldn't-
There's a, there's a, there's a retaining wall that the awning comes up to, running along the proposed back line of the deck.
Okay.
When I drove by, I could see there's basically, there's probably some type of retaining on the side as well.
Yes, again, Prospect Street.
Just very short, prob, pretty short, then it just gets deeper as you go further back into the property, cause there's a hill?
Yeah, that's, I mean, and that's the reason for the, um, the deck replacement, is cause we're replacing that wall.
Okay.
So this is sort of a follow-on project to that one.
Okay, so why is it need to be bigger? Cause one of the things that we have in the zoning ordinance is try, uh, in this case, it's already a non-conforming property?
Yep.
And you probably knew that when, did you just buy the property recently?
Uh, no, about five years ago, so almost six years ago.
Okay, so when you bought it, you might've found out that it was non-conforming with the zoning ordinance, that if you were to build up, out, anything, that you have to come before the zoning board to do anything, because it's already non-conforming. And our purpose is to try reduce non-conforming uses. What you're asking for is to increase the non-conformity of your property, so the question is, why? Could you simply just replace what you have and not really throw too many furs in the saddle, but you're trying to make it bigger? So, what are you, one of the things that the fire chief identified in their review of it is, they just wanna remind you, you can't cook on it.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And one of the things people love to do on decks is cook on it, so.
No, I'm fully, fully aware of that.
Okay, so you're, you're making it bigger for what reason?
Oh, I mean, uh, essentially it's because I, I went, in, in needing to take down the awning in the back of the property, uh, I just expected to, two, two reasons, one is cosmetic reasons, probably for property value. There's some additional siding damage that's underneath that awning, it's kind of old, uh, I mean, that's obviously siding the house is sort of the next project, hopefully on the list. Um, and then secondarily, because there's that retaining wall that's on the back of the property, I wanted it extended all the way so that I had a railing all the way across without necessarily, cause there's no fence there now. But there is the awning that comes up to the, um, almost, almost to the surface, and then obviously the deck blocks off a good portion of it.
So if we were to deny you this, and you came back and said, alright, I'm just gonna replace it, what impact does that have on you, uh, if we were to deny this? And only would want to see a replacement of like, like, uh, stairway and deck?
I, I would expect, uh, a decrease in my property value because I would have, uh, a, a huge area from where I had to take this awning down, uh, of damage to the house that I would have to, um, you know, additional investment into the property in order to, to bring it up to the same level of value, I assume.
Okay.
Like, without having that analysis done, I can only assume that that'd be the case.
Okay.
And also I would have, I would have a concern that I would now wanna put up a fence along that retaining wall in order to make sure that there's, you know.
No.
No, no threat of anybody walking onto the property and falling, falling off the wall.
The awning would be replaced, or you'd just take it down?
I would, I would just, in lieu of, yeah.
The deck would make up the footprint?
Yes, would make up the footprint of what's currently there.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I am.
Is the awning held up by posts or something?
There's, uh, I gotta remember, uh, a hundred percent, there's a post, post on one end and then, uh, almost like a post with a small, it's really just a post and then there's like a piece of plywood kinda covering one end of it. So it's, it's a couple of posts holding up the end, we only asked that question, right?
Um, because if you look at the square footage and include the awning as part of the structure, he's really only increasing the non-conformity by that one foot by, I don't know what that is, the five, five, maybe seven feet. Rather than looking at that he's replacing that deck area by almost doubling it, you know what I'm saying? Cause he's eliminating that awning which could be considered part of a structure, since it is taking up space.
Derrick, did that awning get counted in the building structure? It doesn't seem that it, with a two percent jump, it probably didn't.
I, I calculated it based on what was on the assessing, and it does not appear that that was shown on the.
An awning was not shown?
The awning was not shown on the assessing sketch, so, um, that was not factored into my calculation.
And I'm not going by any of that, I'm just saying, if you look at this, this drawing, it's taking away that awning, but the awning is already there, so it's jutting out into that setback. So it's part of the structure right now, inching out into the setback, so really the only thing he's increasing, um, is the, you know, he's replacing the awning with the deck, but it, he's really only increasing the non-conformity by another foot.
In the eight or six feet or something like that, yeah.
Well, Derrick, why do we have twenty-nine South Mass Street vision in the packet too?
Twenty-nine?
Yes, that's the, that's the neighboring property.
Right, I'm just curious, that's why we had it.
No, I don't, I'm.
Oh, you didn't, oh, this was his application?
Yeah.
Oh, you wanted?
I thought it was, I, I, I could've swore I read somewhere that I had to have the tax cards from.
I think in the instruction that says of affected properties, which we generally take to mean just the application properties.
Oh, sorry.
That's alright.
Now, I'm-
Hey, cost you a couple extra nickels.
Now, the properties that go up Prospect Street, that's an older neighborhood, isn't that, would you think?
I would think so, yeah.
It looks to be, most buildings seem fairly- Sixties.
And they're, they're pretty closely set next to each other, aren't they, if I remember?
Um, my property is a good, there's a, there's a good, uh, I, I'm not sure what, I gotta look at the plot plan, but like good, you know, there's good forty feet between, um, the twenty-nine, the twenty-nine Mass Street property circumvents my property. There's a, another driveway and then another driveway before it gets to the next house. Before it gets to the next structure, I think it's a porch, actually, uh, to my most direct neighbor that'd be closest to this.
Who's your neighbor on the other side, is that the, um, funeral home?
Oh, over here.
Um, over here?
That's, that's twenty-nine, uh, that's the other extreme flow I gave you, that's the twenty-nine South Mass, uh, I think it's a three-unit multifamily house.
Oh, that's just one.
There used to be a flower shop in it.
Oh, yeah, okay, I know where that is.
Yeah, when you drive by, it's like right on top of each other, almost, I mean, you look really close to each other.
Uh, these, these two are, yeah, we're, we're real, real close here, but, yep.
On the back where we're talking about is not as close.
Funeral home is on the other side of Prospect with that circular drain down?
It's on the other side of the street, yep, yep.
Oh, yeah, with this driveway.
Perfect driveway for a funeral home.
In answer to your question, Kathy, I walk that area regularly, uh, Prospect is a pretty tight neighborhood.
They're already tight over there, aren't they, yeah?
Yeah.
And it goes back with the east unit that comes out on, on the other end.
Any last questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Uh, anyone here else speaking in favor of? Any abutters or interested parties speaking against? Any, uh, comments before we close the public hearing, any questions? Public hearing is now closed for this application, and I imagine we can deliberate now. Any comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the variances for the front setback and the side setback and the lot coverage.
Okay, any, Ed's got a second? Any comments to that motion? Alright, ready to vote, all in favor of approving the variance as requested and is outlined by?
Should, should, before we do, should we make any comment as far as the fire department, um, issues, or has that become part of this automatically, or what?
Derrick, is there an expectation that we read, like the Goffstown Fire Department or anybody else's?
You don't need to, um, you don't need to read them, but if you'd like me to incorporate it into the notice of decision, I can do that. Normally what I would do is just make note of that when the building permit application comes in.
To me, that seems reasonable with a building applicant. I tried to make note at the beginning that they, we have these things, so people, they're, they're part of the minutes and people can look at the file, cause it'll be in your file as well, just. Alright, any, would you, is that okay?
Yeah, I think we ought to incorporate that.
Into the file?
Into the, into the file.
Will you amend your motion to incorporate?
Alright, well, I think it's automatic, yeah, no?
Well, I'll incorporate it into the notice of decision, if that's, I'm saying that, right now my staff review will be in the file, the public record that anyone can look at.
Alright, well, I think we let-
Comments, or should we let her amend the?
Joanne, or, or do you wanna amend anything with your motion in the discussion regarding?
Want amended to incorporate?
She already did.
Officially?
I'm comfortable with allowing it to just be handled administratively, but if you would prefer to have it in the motion, I don't really care.
Fine, I'll, I'll go with my original second, okay?
Administrative is fine. Okay, we have a motion to approve the variance, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll be over, sunny.
Congratulations.
Yeah, no grilling out there, you heard us bring it up here.
Just a rocking chair for the baby.
I grill on my desk.
Just a rocking chair for the baby.
Shall not. Okay, the third item on the, uh, public hearings this evening, David Walton and Donna Smith Walton, applicants, are seeking variances to allow the addition of a second dwelling unit and the expansion of an existing contractor's business operating from the property. A variance is required because a proposed addition to the house, excuse me, addition to house, to house the second dwelling unit will be set back twenty feet from the front property line. Whereas section four point three of the zoning ordinance requires a thirty-five foot front yard setback. A variance is required to allow the mixed residential, which is two-family, and a non-residential contracting business uses on the lot. Whereas sections three point seven and three dot eleven dot eight dot six do not permit mixed-use projects. A variance is required because a proposal includes a twenty-six foot by twenty-foot addition for the business, which will be set back approximately sixty feet from the front property line. Whereas section five dot thirteen requires a one-hundred foot setback from all property lines. A variance is required because the property is four acres, whereas section five dot thirteen requires that contracting businesses be located on a lot at least five acres. The property is located at one-one-zero East Dunbarton Road, which is map nine, lot one oh seven in the agricultural district. Prior to any public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact. And Derrick had commented on this regional impact, where he stated, uh, the property butts the Black Brook in the Manchester City line. However, I recommend the board make the determination that the proposed development does not have regional impact as defined by RSA thirty-six colon fifty-five or the guidelines set forth by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. Doubt concerning regional impact shall be resolved in a determination that the development has a potential regional impact, which is RSA thirty-six dot fifty-six. And he had two specific items that, let's see, one, two, three, three specific items that we could consider for regional impact. So with this information, any comments or motion on determining on regional impact?
I, I have a question, there's a picture on the back here, is this the picture of the property we're discussing?
Yes.
I, I think it has, I, I think the people who live in Manchester who have butted this property should be notified.
They, any properties adjacent to this have been notified, including those in Manchester.
Okay.
Regional, a finding of regional impact would notify the city of Manchester.
Okay.
And the regional planning, but the one, there was one abutter in Manchester, they were notified.
Okay, that was, that would be my only concern, if there was regional impact was concerned, thank, thanks, Derek.
Just the one, just the, just the affected immediate properties?
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept Derrick's recommendation and find that there's no regional impact.
Okay, any seconds?
A second.
Alright, we have a first and second, any discussion on regional impact? All those in favors that it is not have regional impact, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, so five, zero, zero. Okay, uh, in the staff review, Derrick has a number of items here, talking about non-conforming use. Any construction would be subject to applicable building and fire codes. Uh, the proposed additions require New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services shoreland permits, impact fees. If this application was sent to the planning board for review and comments, it is involved a use that would result in a site plan review, comment is anticipated at the five-twenty-seven-ten meeting. Did they provide comment?
They provided no, uh, comment on this, uh, application, that, that was the vote to provide.
Okay.
They provided no comment because they might see it back again.
Alright, I'm noticing a trend. This application was not sent to the Conservation Commission and a butter notification information. And on the back page, the Goffstown Fire Department did have comments, um, they have five comments.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, Derrick, why wouldn't it have been sent to conservation since it's so close to Black, Black Brook?
Cause it doesn't involve a variance with the wetland buffer, if, um, if the zoning board makes a determination, they'd like to send it 'cause of its proximity, they can, but it's not an automatic.
Okay.
Send it, um, it, it's simply, because it, it's when it involves a variance and then the conservation has asked for a couple other.
Okay.
Considerations.
Any, any further follow-up on that, Joanne, do you disagree?
Um, I guess, maybe I'd like to hear more, but, um, is this co, this is a contracting business, right? Is this contracting business, this is in the agricultural zone, so is this something that currently is already allowed?
It is a permitted use provided you have five acres.
Okay.
And a hundred foot setback and site plan, however, when the use was established in nineteen ninety-six, it was a permitted use. There was no lot size requirement, there was no setback requirement, and there was no specific site plan requirement.
Really?
Correct.
And then it got changed?
And then that, the zoning ordinance changed.
Okay.
So it was in compliance at the time?
As far as I can find, yes.
And now it's essentially a non-conforming use?
Correct, due to a change in the ordinance.
Okay, anything else on that, Joanne?
No.
Okay, so the Goffstown Fire Department had five comments.
Nice picture.
Let's see, I'm sorry, they had three major comment, four major comments, um, there.
Let's look at this picture.
Okay, so we are now ready to hear from the applicant, who is here to speak on behalf of the applicant. Please come forward, state your name.
My name's Robert Garand, I'm, uh, the designer working with the Waltons on the project.
How do you spell your last?
Garand, G-A-R-A-N-D.
I thought it was East Dunbarton.
I'm not familiar where this is, could, do you have a locus?
Um, I could probably point it out up here if you don't mind. Let's see here, I'm trying to paint myself, uh, where are we, where's, down, down from here, Goffstown Back Road.
Down, down, is that right?
Yep, this end.
We're, we're right over here, uh, boy, I don't see the body of water where we're supposed to. East Dunbarton Road is right here, but I don't see, there, there's a river back here somewhere, and it's probably, it's too small of a scale to see some of the river, although it does abut the Manchester.
It's Manchester line?
And it's right after this V, so that could be it right there.
That can help if you like.
Uh, Ryan, who actually lives there, maybe you can help me out with the exact where it is.
I work there, right. Yeah.
Right. Look at that one, right? Where is this, uh, and it abuts Manchester.
Yeah.
Right, so could it be this one, I know there's no river here, that's what's confusing to me.
Right.
And, uh, like larger body of water, yeah, but that's the V, that's Montalona Road, that's where you go, and then there's one, two, right?
That's where Black, Black Brook, not Montalona, you're not quite to Montalona yet.
It's a little weird.
I thought this was Black Brook.
This is Black Brook Road, oh, I'm sorry. This is Black Brook Road. Oh, I'm sorry, I was completely confused. This is, uh.
We are, further, oh, further down.
Did I show you?
Google found it.
Right here. I don't believe in this. Well, you guys are after the V, right? Wait, right here, there it is, right there, with the power lines.
Oh, yeah, the power lines.
That's it, right there.
It's on Dunbarton, correct?
It's on Dunbar.
All right. I'd be happy to submit a more detailed locus map if you guys would like. We'll see if we need that, okay. Did they answer your questions?
Yes, I know where it is.
Okay, please.
Just a little bit about the project. It's an existing demolition business that has been on site and operational since around nineteen ninety-three. The current owners are planning to sell the existing house to a family member, their son, so he can live there and keep running the business. And they would like to live in the proposed twenty-four by forty-five addition shown on the proposed plot plan. The proposed twenty-six by twenty addition is needed so that storage currently within the existing basement of the existing house can be moved to a more convenient space accessible to the business. Again, this is shown on the proposed plot plan. Right now, the storage is in the basement of the existing house, which, you know, the son would like to raise his family in. We are, those are the only changes on the site at this point, and just the two proposed additions, and we are asking for the variances described in the letter to the abutters.
Can you, can you repeat it? So the son, does the son live there right now?
He does not.
So the, the parents live, live there?
Dave and Donna, the parents live there, Dave, the, the current owners of the property live there.
They would, they would be the ones that would move into that, a new, single-family home onto the property.
Correct. Correct.
Can I, can I ask another question? It says here, a variance is required to allow the mixed residential and non-residential, but they already have that now.
Correct, but they're expanding from a single family to a duplex.
To a tri family.
So I consider that a change in.
Is it, is it a duplex, or is it a, because they're calling it on this plan, an accessory apartment? Would they need a variance to go for a larger accessory apartment rather than the mixed use?
If I can interject here, the accessory dwelling unit is actually part of the existing house. Originally, when they designed it, there is an accessory dwelling unit in the basement that is just, doesn't comply with any sort of ADA rules. It's, it probably complies to the six hundred and fifty square feet that you guys have for the accessory dwelling unit, but that's part of the existing house as it is, not the proposed addition.
So you're looking at building an entire new, footprinted home that's just next to the current home that's there.
Attached to, attached to, correct.
So the accessory apartment that's in the basement would remain?
No, we would turn, we're gonna take out the kitchen in there, and I didn't get into that because, again, planning, or that's kind of permitting and stuff, but, yeah, the plan is to turn that into a single-family home and take out that accessory dwelling unit downstairs. They use it for storage.
Will there be access to the proposed addition from the main house, or is it just gonna share a common wall?
We'd like there to be access, yes.
So is this really a duplex, or is it, is it an addition?
Or is it an accessory dwelling that's larger than?
Well, the reason why I didn't go with it.
It's not gonna be larger than the main.
The reason why I didn't, yeah, it is gonna have its own kitchen, correct. So at that point, the accessory dwelling unit in the zoning ordinance says that I can do six hundred and fifty square feet. In my opinion, that's not enough square footage to do a handicap accessible accessory dwelling unit.
I understand that, that's why I'm wondering if you should be getting a variance to go larger on the accessory, rather than saying, um,
Yeah.
to allow a mixed.
Let's, let's, let Derek explain what he went through on this.
Yeah, understand.
Well, no, it was basically the square footage, there's a requirement in our zoning ordinance that if you're gonna convert from a single family to a duplex, that both dwelling units be at least eight hundred square feet. So based on that, I felt, even if they had an interior connecting door, it'd be most similar to a duplex. Even though they had that interior connecting door, the size of the units would be most similar to a duplex than a single family with a, with a, I guess, an accessory dwelling unit that has a variance for size. And I guess it's just, it's just what you call it.
And, and in this case, they don't, we don't require, it doesn't require a door to go between the two, I mean.
Does not require.
They could actually request that it be two separate dwelling units, ten feet apart, and that would, it would still come with this variance request, correct?
Uh, no.
Or do they need to be together?
They need to have some type of common wall, or.
Okay.
And duplexes are allowed in agricultural?
Provided you have at least three acres and three hundred feet of frontage, yes.
What's the frontage here?
Over three hundred, it's, I believe it's close to four hundred feet.
So. So, that issues.
So it'd be a permitted use if the business wasn't, if it didn't have the mixed non-residential.
And again, the reason that we're looking at all these things that it's not large enough, they don't have the proper setbacks, is because they're opening themselves up by coming and increasing, and basically changing it, the non-conforming use. All those things now have to be reapplied on the current zoning ordinance.
Well, they do because they have the proposed storage addition, that would be an expansion of the business, and the proposed addition does not meet the required front yard setback.
So we end up looking at all the mixed use, setback issues, and that's why you have them listed here.
For, yeah, yeah. I mean, you can't, I guess you can't take away their, their grandfather's non-conforming use.
Can't.
You can't, can't make it, change that.
Correct, but if we're gonna expand it.
Yes, if they're gonna expand on it, you, yeah.
You have to get all those.
But if it was an accessory, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a mixed.
To allow a mixed use and non-residential.
If that was.
Sections three, blah, 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 do not permit mixed use projects.
So if that was an accessory, a variance for an accessory use, would he then be a mixed use issue?
I would consider it, yes, I would still consider a mixed use issue because they're expanding the non-residential footprint.
But.
Because today, they have a mixed use.
Yep.
They have a residence plus a business, and in the agricultural, agricultural zone, that is, right now, not allowed.
But he could have a three family with the business, and that's okay?
No, not in the agricultural district.
You know what I'm really confused, and I want to have a discussion about this afterwards, is if we're interpreting this, and, and the court interpreted that section, then how could you ever have a farm?
We talked about that when we talked about the Abil Cutter case. How do you do farms?
And, and I'm telling you, that, that ordinance was not written for that purpose, and, and maybe we need to have a discussion with the planning board, and they need to amend that next year.
How do you go back to a traditional farm, where you have a family that's living there with cattle, milking cattle?
You can't, the way they're interpreting this now, not saying you're doing it, but that's the board came out with it.
Well, I think the distinction that this interpretation came out of was a single-family house with a slaughterhouse, which was not, because our zoning ordinance does allow, and we're getting a little bit away from this application.
We can talk about that later, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I guess that, I, I just went, based on that interpretation in that case, that's how I noticed this to be consistent with how we did this one, how the landscaping business on Patty Hill Road was noticed, to stay consistent.
Right. I went back and looked at that one.
The same with actually the first case tonight, was noticed the same way.
Yeah.
Although different circumstances.
Yeah, because we made, I mean, Len made those same comments about the mixed use and stuff, because we did all address all that stuff, and I was surprised it was a year ago. I went back one by one, and it took me a year to get to the right minutes.
So this particular property is grandfathered from any site plan review, is that what you're saying?
It was until the point where they expand. Once you expand, you need to be in conformance.
So they do need to go there, okay.
That's why they need, yeah, I would say they do need a site plan.
Okay, so any questions from the applicant here? We have their application that speaks to the five different criteria requesting a variance.
Just want to clear on the site plan, the black here is the waterway, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I have one more question, sorry.
Sure.
Um, it's hard to tell from this photo, and, and it doesn't show, at least I don't see it on here, as to where your pavement is.
Uh, yeah, I don't actually show it on here. And I'm not sure the photo is close enough to see that. I could have Ryan attest to where the pavement is, kind of showing on this if you'd like.
Sure.
Um, why don't we, uh, just look over here and kind of.
Where's the river? The Black Blob.
It's going through.
Well, that's not, oh, okay, this is.
Looks the waterway, yeah.
Where the, where the pavement exists now. Now, just the pavement, or the actual, I mean, the actual driveway, or?
Well, if it's paved.
Okay, wherever the pavement is.
Okay, uh, there is a small, I guess you'd call it four-car driveway in the front, uh, you know, two cars, side by each, two rows right here.
Let's see here.
And on the far side, this is the proposed new addition. On the far side, there's just a little piece of an old asphalt driveway that's kind of crumbling away, and that'll get done away with with the addition, so.
And then on the right side, is that paved?
Which side? Over here?
Yeah.
Uh, no, that's a gravel parking lot.
Like, right, this, this area right here?
In the, on the back.
Yeah, that's all gravel.
It's good.
Looks like pavement.
Yeah.
Well, we actually, we, uh, take quite a bit of effort to keep it level and compact and stuff, but no, this is the only pavement right here. And like I said, there's a little piece of crumbling driveway right there, which would be done away with, with the addition.
Mm-hmm.
And all the rest of this is, is compact and gravel.
Okay.
Ryan, can I get your last name?
Walton.
Okay, you're the son?
I am, and the office manager.
And the office manager. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna launch into my, you heard the first application tonight.
I did, yes.
So, here's the, why you? Why is this property unique in that, you know, the zoning ordinance is unfairly burdening you that you, I mean, have to do this?
To be honest with you, when we were first going with the variances, looking at the variances, I was thinking that it was gonna be, you know, one or two, and when we got into four, I was, you know, a little taken aback, but I said, well, that's, let's go forward, because this is exactly what we want. The setbacks on the, on the first variance, for instance, I can design that so that it does comply and goes within the setback. Again, since the house is already set in front of the setback and kind of extending the, the new design, and, and it would look nice and more aesthetically pleasing, you know, I think that having the, the front setback for the twenty-four forty-five addition would, it would just allow the house to look more aesthetically pleasing, in my opinion. The proposed storage addition, can we put it on, there's another structure out there that is used for storage now, can we put a, an addition off that? Yes, we could, but then we'd be into the wetland setback. So, you know, we did look at different areas and how, you know, how we were gonna put these, get the scope of work that, that he wanted done. How does it affect, you know, how does it affect them, you know, over and above everything else? You know, I, I think that with the, the way the zoning, zoning ordinance is set up and the way that the house functions, you know, where we're putting these additions seem to, they, they seem to work well for the, sort of the interior environment and how the business functions and, you know, least impact of the site. I do know that they had, one time, had, had a, had a permit out to put a separate dwelling structure, it was gonna be much bigger and stuff. This is all gonna be kind of residential scale, it's gonna be smaller scale, and, you know, you'll notice it as an addition, I'm sure, but it's not gonna be a two-story thing or a barn, you know, another barn going on site for storage, so that's why we're thinking that it's, you know, a little bit more on the residential scale.
Let me hone in just a little bit, and I think it's, it's different only from the first application in that you already have a permitted use, that you're already mixed use, and that's been grandfathered. So the question becomes simply, why does it have to change? Why is it that, that the parents need, if they're gonna sell it to the son, that the parents need to stay on the site, they require the, why can't they move somewhere else? Why do you have to change the footprint? I mean, is it economics to the family, and this is more not really in your bailiwick, like you speak to all those things for the, for the applicant, but, you know, is the economics of it, that, you know, there is no other reasonable alternative for them money-wise? So, you know, because the standard is for, for non-conforming use, again, is to try to not make it more non-conforming.
Sure.
Which is what we're, what we want to do as a zoning board, and what you're asking us to do is make it more non-conforming. And so the question is, why? Why does it have to be like this? Why do the parents have to live on the property after they sell it to the son? Why do you have to make a bigger storage area? Why do you have to do that?
One, one reason that I didn't really, I, I wasn't sure how appropriate it was to bring up in a, in a situation like this, but the reason why the, the dwelling unit needs to be connected to the house is because one, one of the owners is in failing health, and they're gonna need some help from the family members in taking care of that person. Meaning that they need an accessory dwelling unit or some sort of a detached residential, you know, living area. The, the, the storage, I think if that's something that everyone's a little worried about, I think we can kind of, we can make that go away, or make, find some sort of conforming use if that's a problem. That one, I'm just saying that it's, it's very convenient for where the business is located right now, to put that where it is and kind of extend that storage, which, again, we have to take that out of the existing house so that the son can have his full house that he would like to raise his family in. So the storage, I really don't have a, you know, a, a very perfect, concrete reason why it has to go there. I can look at other places where to put that storage, absolutely.
Okay, but, but for the family, it's, it's due to health concerns and?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Could the storage facility be attached to the existing storage facility on the house side? That way you wouldn't be infringing on the wetland.
Possibly. Yeah, to, to be honest with you, I, I didn't really look that much further into it, because I wasn't sure, you know, how, how critical it would be, but, yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's, I think there's definitely some other options there.
Is that more, is that a site planning? Would the site planning walk them through that? Anybody helping, putting things in the right spots? What, you know, like, what, it had a question, is, you know, is the storage building in the right spot, or can it be moved? Is that a planning board working with them, or is it something we would address?
I, I don't know, I'm throwing it up, I don't know.
I think, I, I honestly think that this is almost like a catch-22, I don't know why, but it seems like he has everything permitted. You know, he has the commercial industry permitted, he has his residence, and he had an, an accessory dwelling unit underneath it. And if we had gone that route of possibly thinking the attachment to be a vari- variation of an accessory dwelling unit as described in our zoning ordinance, then why is he non-conforming?
Why is he non-conforming?
Right.
He's non-conforming right now.
He's non-conforming right now because?
Because the zoning ordinance changed in?
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one, that said what he had before, which was okay, is no longer okay.
Right, but if he didn't do anything to this property, he would still be okay, because he's grandfathered.
Correct. Correct.
So if he had gone with taking the accessory dwelling unit from underneath, which is conforming, and, and because he changed the accessory dwelling unit from underneath the home, to the side of the home, he's thrown out into non-conformity?
I don't know. Would you make a determination?
Well, again, when Rob came in to talk to me, he said, this is what they want.
Right.
And this is what their needs are. And one of it was a one thousand eighty square foot addition. That exceeds a six hundred and fifty square foot. So he would've had to come for a variance for that, and the proposed to, to make it fit with the building that's there now, they would've needed a variance for the front setback, and that's where I said, well, based on the size, I would suggest you do it as a duplex, because that's a permitted use, you meet the minimum requirements. And at the same time, the proposed storage addition was the expansion of the business, which had become non-conforming, because it didn't meet the five-acre minimum, and it didn't have a site plan, and that addition doesn't meet the hundred-foot setback. So I guess they're asking for the variances, because this is what they said. So, I guess they're asking for the variances, because this is what they said.
Right.
This is what their needs are.
I, I hear ya.
So, so, yeah, could they have maybe, without expanding the business and building in a different place, moved an accessory dwelling unit? Yeah, they may have been able to do that without needing to come to this board, but that wasn't what their needs were. This is, this is what they, they stated are, their needs are.
Good questions, good questions.
That, that's, that's my, my major concern here, because it existed okay before, and it's an interpretation, not an interpretation, but it's the way it was presented and submitted, and that's the way the application has been submitted. However, if, if it was rethought, we might not even be here, because it didn't change, i- it, it didn't violate the zoning law.
Didn't change the conformity, that's the zoning.
Didn't change it. It didn't change the zoning law, so.
And, you know, we have the application in for, in front of us, and if they go to the planning board and say, you know what, we wanna change it.
Right. Right. So, I would say, based upon that, when I, when I look at this and when I think of it, and I understand, um, the issue in the zoning ordinance is about not, um, adding to non-conformity. I, I feel that that, in this particular instance, the, 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 the pen might say that it's a non-conforming situation, or the black and white in, in what you read, but when I look at this, it's just, um, it, it's almost exactly as to what it is already, to me, when I look at it. It's almost exactly as to what he has. It's just the a- addition is now being described as a duplex versus an accell- accessory dwelling unit.
Is it the square footage that makes the difference?
Yes.
Yeah, an accessory dwelling unit can only be six hundred fifty square feet.
Can only be.
Right. But if you'd gone, and that's where we get back to, if you'd gone for a variance to the accessory dwelling unit to be a thousand eighty, not the six hundred and somewhat feet, then it would be, that would be the variance that you'd make.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
All right, any other questions?
For Mr. Garand?
Aaron?
Either one of us.
Oh, come on.
Depends if you're from.
What, what from Vermont and what's from New Hampshire?
Canada, Vermont, yeah, it's either one. You make a pick.
In consideration, didn't need to see it, 'cause nothing's, nothing that's being done is within the setback area.
Correct, they're not requesting a variance, and they would be part of the TRC for site plan.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for making your presentation. Anyone else here speaking on behalf of the applicant? Anyone here, Anya Butters or interest party speaking against sir in the second row? Come, please, no, please come forward.
Ryan's got something.
Oh, something forward. Oh, I didn't see your hand. Yeah, please. No, you're, come on, why don't you come up?
Okay.
'Cause I imagine you're gonna speak on, on behalf of the applicant.
Uh, yes, really quickly, um, the, uh, the sole reason for the, um, I heard you guys bring up the, the storage area, the expanded storage. It's not so much expanded storage, it's moving the storage, which is in, um, which would become my brother's home, uh, into a part of the building, which would be solely for the business. Uh, so it's not really an expansion of storage, it's just moving the storage from point A to point B. Part of the, uh, business, uh, addition is expanded office space. Uh, the storage and the office kinda have to work in tandem. We have a lot of expensive, uh, equipment and tools under lock and key, and I, as the office manager, have to monitor, uh, who goes in and out of those storage areas. Which, if the storage area were on the other side of the building or on another part of the property, I wouldn't be able to adequately do.
Okay.
Basically, just, you know, so we're clear, the storage area will be below and I will be, uh, my office will be directly above it.
And you're not the son that would be living there, then?
No, that would be my brother Cory. I'm, I'm the office manager, I, I don't live on the property.
Okay. All right, anything else? Any, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir in the back? Oh, please, uh, sit.
My name is Louis La Force. I live at one twenty East Dunbarton Road.
Okay.
L-A capital F-O-R-C-E. Louis, L-U-Y-S. I've lived at one twenty East Dunbarton Road since nineteen sixty-nine, and when Dave Walton bought the property, he assured me he was gonna leave the property or use the property in such a way that I would never complain. And I found, over the years, since Dave bought the property, he's always left it very neat. Everything's well organized, so I don't have an issue with that. The only issue I have, and I don't have an issue with the location of the addition, it's the existing design of the, uh, the redesign of the septic system. I have a well that's not far away from where it's located, and the, uh, the, uh, septic system is upgrade from the location of my well. Now, it's probably in compliance, I'm not sure about the, excuse me, distances, uh, in terms of, uh, the location of the septic system versus the location, the, uh, position of a well. But I'm wondering what is the effect going to be of the redesign of the septic system? That's my only concern. I have no other issues with what, uh, the Waltons wanna do with their property. They've been very, they've been very nice neighbors, always left the place, always left their place clean.
And, and I think if, uh, Joanne and Gail probably, and anybody here can correct me, that'd be something that'd be dealt with at the planning board, correct, the location of the, the, uh, septic?
Will the, the town and the state have requirements?
As long as they met those.
Okay.
That's the only concern I have about that. Everything else is, I have no issues with anything else here.
Okay.
That would be on the table of the planning board, not on the zoning board table, the septic, yeah.
They would have to show their septic on the site plan, but they wouldn't necessarily know where, um, this man's well is located. That would be something that would be done through this permitting for the septic.
You can't, you can't miss it, but I know what you mean. I know what you're saying.
Okay, great.
If they're ex, if they're redoing their septic, which it sounds like they are.
They would have to if they're changing, changing.
Okay, so I think as long as you keep following what's going on, they're gonna take care of you.
Okay, will I be notified if, uh, by the planning board?
You about the property?
When this redesign?
Are you the next-door neighbor?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm the next-door neighbor.
Yeah, then you would be notified.
Were you, were you notified with this one? Okay, you'd be notified.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, first, thank you. Ma'am, please come forward.
First, I have a question for Mr. Gardner to hear about these plans.
Do you wanna come forward and state your name?
She's not supposed to talk to them.
Yeah, ma'am, can you come forward?
She's not supposed to answer.
Well, do you know what this double line is on the plans?
What's your name?
Carol LeBree.
Easement for the, um, power, uh...
Well, it's off. That's number one. Um...
Voila.
What do you mean it, Carol, what do you mean by it's, uh?
The power lines are further this way from his property, and I have a plot plan out back that shows them to be on my grandmother's deed. She has the lease to the public service for a hundred years, so...
So, where, where do you live compared to this?
Right next door, the other side of Mr. La Force.
Okay.
On the other side of Mr. Walton.
Okay, so on, on this map, on this bottom side?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're saying this easement, and that's what these double lines going across here are, you say they're closer to your property than is indicated on this map?
That's right.
You could see them in this picture.
Okay, so what is your concern or comment?
Well, that lot line has been a... Well, it's, it just isn't right. I, I have plans that show it. I spoke to his dad about the location when he first moved in. They are, they are moving in on my property on that side of their property. And, um, I understand they're grandfathered, but what I don't understand is, the previous business was a contractor who built homes. He used the storage area in the back to cut the lumber and then went and built the home elsewhere. They run their business totally out of their yard. They do contract work on the outside.
What year did this transition from cutting lumber on the property to?
Well, no, cut, he cut lumber
Right.
to manufacture homes.
Right, but they don't do that on the property now?
What do they do now?
No, they do recycling. Um, they have, they do, uh, all types of work. They're in and out all day long, different trucks.
The current owners do that, you say?
Yes.
What, do you know what year that transition from the lumber?
Well, Mr. Belleville passed away, and his wife was there a couple of years before Mr. and Mrs. Walton bought the house.
So, it was before nineteen ninety-nine or whatever, so, okay.
Now, um...
So, how do you?
You know, I've been listening to the conversation going on here about what this board is supposed to handle, okay, what you try to do.
We work on that every month.
Yeah, I know. What I'm, they do a lot of recycling on the property, and they do a lot of regrooming of the land.
Of their land?
Yeah, they do grading after they do their recycling. You know, they have to clean up, which they keep the property nice and clean.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
What do you mean by recycling? Recycling of what?
Cans, bottles, wire.
And it's stored there?
Well, it's mostly worked on there and then trucked out. What I'm wondering is, I understand they have a problem and they need to expand the house, and they wanna extend, you know, their storage area, and they wanna extend an area for the parents to live there, which I understand, and, you know, but if they're increasing that volume, how much more business are they gonna increase at the same time?
Okay, you say you're worried about a possible increase in the business?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm questioning it.
Okay.
Okay. And the area in the backyard, they expanded that behind the storage. It was maybe eighteen feet wide in that area, and it's much wider, they widened it out, so it gives them access to go behind the storage as well as go around the front. The storage building, it says existing storage building? It's a big red barn. It was at one time, and it's been, I think they repainted it, but my questions are, you know, if they're gonna increase the business in the area, we're not a business area, we're residential agricultural there. And I'd just like you to take a better look at it and go down and take a look at, at the house itself, if you're gonna make a judgment on this and let it go further to the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can, can I ask for clarification of this, these dotted lines?
Sure.
In relationship to this photo?
Who do you wanna ask it of?
They don't seem to line up the way they show in the photo.
Do you want the, uh, Mr., uh, Garand to come forward and answer that, since he drew the map?
I'm sorry, I just did that to you. I do that to my kids.
Yeah, if you, if you'd like, this is directly from, uh, your office. It's not a plot, it's not a certified plot plan. It was not done by a surveyor. It's a, it's an image.
You mean this came out of the file from the office?
Out of your GIS system.
Listed?
From the town clerk's office, yeah, right upstairs. So, it's not a certified plot plan, and it was my understanding that we were gonna have to go through site plan review and do all that stuff anyway. And I just, we, we started this project, uh, three, four weeks ago, so we wanted to get on the docket as quick as possible. That's why there's, it's not a, it's not a certified plot plan, it's a, it's a plot plan at this point. And there are some, you know, this could be off ten feet for all I know. I really don't know. And that's why, you know, these power lines might look different from a GIS photo, actual photo, to the photo that you have here. We're definitely gonna be going through some sort of a, you know, get a certified surveyor out there.
What is this photo from?
It's from pictometry, and that's a, it's not a straight overhead, it's a forty-five degree angle worth of photo.
And this one you said came from the town?
Yeah.
Clerk's office?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I-
From the assessing or GIS software.
Okay.
I mean, I scaled it up. It's, it's really, I, I probably shouldn't even put a scale on this, although I wanted to have some sort of reference point, I guess. Now, the other thing too, I don't know if you guys need any more explanation on how the business work. We'd be happy to give that information out.
Did you have any other questions?
Well, I guess I, I'd like to know that.
Okay, Brian, why don't you come up and explain sort of what happens and, and what kind of, uh, you know, things are happening there?
Could you just tell us, like, what it is that you do on the site?
Yeah, uh, we own an interior demolition company. We do interior demolition, concrete cutting, and core drilling on, uh, mostly commercial, uh, properties. Typically, uh, especially as hospitals, we do schools, nursing homes, factories, things of that nature. We, we basically, uh, all our tools and our equipment are stored onsite, uh, at one-ten East Dunbarton, and we go to the job site, we, we do our work, all our tools and equipment come home. Uh, we do have a little bit of, um, some of our building materials, like copper pipe and stuff like that, uh, inside the, the garage area, we just cut it up and make it, um, the appropriate sizes to, to sell. That's it. That's the recycling.
So, that's the recycling?
Yes. No, no cans, no bottles, no...
You don't bring all your construction debris back there?
Oh, no, no, the va- the vast majority of it i- is not recyclable. It's, you know, if you look around, it's sheetrock, acoustic ceiling tiles.
So, you separated at the job site a lot of it?
Sure, and all the steel leaves directly from the job site to the, um, recycling plants. You know, there's no processing necessary with that, you know, all the carpet, all the concrete, all the everything. Ninety-nine point nine percent of a building, uh, the wood goes directly to a processing plant. It, it doesn't come, there, there's no reason to bring it back to our shop. It's just things like, uh, brass fittings, copper pipes, stuff like that, and that just gets chopped up, put in a Gaylord, picked up, put on the back of a truck and, and sent to, uh, the recycling facility.
And as part of, as the Butters was asking, is, is part of this, uh, any change to the business, any increase or?
No, that's actually what I would like to reiterate. It's, it's, we're not increasing the business, we're not employing more people or buying more trucks or, you know, equipment or anything like that. Because of, uh, my parents' health concerns, um, we're just trying to build an appropriate residence for them, and because we have to kind of shut things around with the, the residency situation, we're just moving, uh, s- storage from A to B, and because we're rearranging the residences a little bit so that my brother, um, and his wife can be present to take care of my parents, you know, basically next-door neighbors, um, in like a duplex-like setting. My office and, um, you know, the clerical aspect of the, um, business is gonna be moved over a little bit, and, um, basically, the office that I have is not being expanded, it's just being jumped over a little bit. The storage is being taken out of the existing structure and put underneath my, uh, office. So, it's not, um, any increase in, um, you know, we, we don't, we don't produce anything, but there's no increase in productivity or scope of, of work. Uh, you know, we're not taking on, um, a new aspect or line of, of business, you know what I mean? It's just moving from point A to point B to accommodate my, uh, my parents' change in health concerns.
Essentially, then, just a reconfiguration without an expansion.
Precisely. Well, the, the residential aspect is expanding. The business aspect is not expanding at all, it's just reconfiguring.
Joanne, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Lynn, anyone have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I think we just about hit everybody in the audience. Any questions for the applicants, the Butters, before we close the public hearing? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing, and I believe we can deliberate now. Any comments, questions, or motions? Anybody, anybody?
Can I make a motion that we grant the variance? Um, yeah, grant the variance, and that it, um, it would be a hardship if we did not grant the variance for reasons stated as to why the proposed addition is needed to be done at its location next to the-
is needed to be done at its location next to the residential dwelling that exists.
I'll even second that for you.
There you go.
I agree, um, I'm gonna let me here, I'll second that. Any comment, discussion? All right, not Lynn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or obscene, five zero zero. Okay, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, and our last item on the docket for this evening is a rehearing request and I'm gonna read it. Christopher A. Bandazian, on behalf of Victor and Patricia Martel, submitted a request for rehearing from the ZBA's April sixth, two thousand and ten decision to deny the Martels' request for a variance to allow a three-lot subdivision, which would have maintained the existing residence on East Dunbarton Road and created two new non-conforming lots with zero feet of frontage with access via a driveway from East Dunbarton Road. The request for rehearing was submitted on May fifth, two thousand and ten, within thirty days of the date of decision. In accordance with New Hampshire RSA six seven seven colon two and section fifteen point three point seven point eight of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The subject property is located at two-four-seven East Dunbarton Road, which is MAP nine, lot eighty-five, in an agricultural district. And we received a nine-page, eight-page, um, request for rehearing. Any comments or points of order on this request for rehearing?
I make a motion that we deny the request for rehearing. Based upon the fact that we went over all of the particular issues that have been mentioned and all of the requirements needed for us to come to our decision. And I felt that we were very thorough, um, in our dis- in our, uh, reasoning. And therefore I, I do not feel that we need to rehear it again.
All right, any comments? Seconds?
I'm just wondering if, you know, we had discussed previous to that. Um, when they were looking at coming off.
Lisa Lane?
Lisa Lane.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if, if our discussions didn't lead him to believe that if he applied for the variance for, for design six?
You're right, six.
That, you know, based on the fact that all the other abutters said, yeah, you do that and we don't have a problem with it. And we kind of also said, you know, yeah, that's an option, we didn't say, yeah, we'll approve it. But I'm wondering if we didn't lead him to believe that if he came back with that, which he did, that it would get approved and then all of a sudden we changed the rules on him again.
I'm, I'm ready to answer that.
Yeah.
Me too.
No, no, that's, that's okay, I'm, I'm just throwing that out because of-
I think we addressed that though during the hearing, that was brought up, that we, that we did not-
That we did, right, and I'm not saying that we said if you come back with six, we'd approve.
We asked that specific question.
We specifically addressed that and told him that it was not a guarantee and that it wasn't, you know, it wasn't swapping one for the other or to do that.
And, and if we go back into the minutes,
Mm-hmm.
I specifically stated at every single meeting that even if he came in off of
East Dunbar-
East Dunbarton Road, that the preference of the subdivision line going from Lisa Drive down to East Dunbarton Road, separating his property in half horizontally, I mean vertically
Right.
versus horizontally, that was, I mentioned that every single time at every meeting. And therefore he knew-
At least it gave it some, some degree of conformity by doing that.
Correct, and he knew that that, he knew that there was at least one person on this board that wasn't necessarily giving him the impression that we would, would approve it, and I brought that up.
Now, we, we actually poke at that a couple of times.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
No, no, they, they poke at it in their request for hearing, the fact that we were focusing on an alternate solution when we shouldn't have been. They were, they, they make that claim in here, but we, as far as when we're deliberating this decision, um, we brought up that specific thing, hey, did we lead them on by saying this and that, and we decided, no.
No, I, no, I remember that conversation, absolutely, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out.
It's an excellent point to throw out because it could come-
It could come back to bite us and I just wanna make sure it doesn't.
No, I know, we talked about it.
Then do we wanna have a rehearing to, to, uh, just firm up the record? Doesn't mean that we change our, our mind or we think the argument is correct, it just means we would be firming up the record. But that's an awful big hearing to go through again.
It, yeah, that's true.
Where's the justice in that?
I think we firmed it up, I think we firmed, we double-firmed it up.
I think if there's enough mention to it, just to cover us, if there's enough mention to it in, in the, in the midst of the meeting where we denied, then, yeah, I'm all for denying this.
Some of the notes I put down, um, is, you know, they made a lot of claims that we didn't find things. We didn't make a finding on this, we didn't make a finding on that. And, and the reason we didn't find a lot of these things is that we didn't find an issue with these things. Uh, you know, so like, um, that the ZBA, and this is on page two of the argument in paragraph three. The ZBA also did not articulate a counterbalancing gain to the public that outweighs applicant's loss or explain how the proposed residential use was inconsistent with the abus- abutting residential subdivision or explain how a driveway curb cut on East Dunbarton Road would alter the character of the area. Well, you're right, we didn't, because we didn't make those findings that it would alter the character or that, that the residential proposed use was inconsistent. So we found, because it was a vote against, we used ammunition that says why we was a vote against. So we didn't make a vote that it was for, so they do that a number of times. Um, they had a couple of things were not relevant, um-
Yeah.
Do you think that the, um, reasonings that we gave why we were against it were consistent with the, um, with the, uh, variance criteria and stuff?
Well, I know we went through, this was the one where we didn't know how we're gonna come out the other end, right? So we walked, I think at length, through each one of the variance criteria, that's how I recall it. That's where I said, okay, folks, since we don't know how we're, oh, we're gonna do, I think that was this case. And we said, all right, first one, spirit of the ordinance, let's talk about it. We made essentially understandings of each one and then we voted on an overall reason. So I think we did, 'cause we, we went for, here's the reasons why we disapprove it.
And what was it, um, what was the argument that, that you were presenting with the fact that it was already a residential property and therefore it wasn't?
It's, it's the hardship criteria five B.
And, and, and for what it's worth, there, there still exists a possibility of another form of subdivision that would lead him out of a path of hardship if he felt it would, so all avenues haven't been ex- explored.
But we did positively make a determination on the application that was in front of us.
Because we had two lots that had no street frontage.
Right.
Right, and we could not make the case why we thought that was, uh, a hardship for them.
Right.
And then we brought up the flag, flagship issue and how we got from
The flag lots.
Flag lots to, to this, so.
Um, they also talked about, you know, they repeated over and over again how the planning board found it was acceptable. Um, you know, and then so why does the zoning board find it not acceptable? And I think they were misstating what the planning board's comments were, that the planning board was supportive of an easement or right-of-way up to the property line in anticipation of a through road. It wasn't anticipation of a driveway, it wasn't anticipation of necessarily even subdividing or what the subdivision looked like. It was essentially that they wanted to not have that cul-de-sac there, a, a dead end, they wanted a through road if possible. That was the end.
I remember that conversation at the planning board.
Yeah, it wasn't, oh, I, we wanna be able to support them in subdividing their property, I, I don't think, that was the emphasis of it, may, may have been part of the discussion. But it was, we want a through road so that we don't have a dead end. So if they were to subdivide it, we want a through road.
Correct.
Not that, oh, we want a driveway or something like that. So, and and you know, they made, yeah. Yeah, they just, they made a lot of statements saying, we didn't find this, we didn't find that, well, or made statements, well, we didn't find the things that they were wanting us to find.
At some point, things are hashed over enough here that we just have to leave it to the courts if that's where they just go.
That's the subj- substantial justice part of it. Would we go back and make a different decision because we erred on the law? Or we erred on, on the process in hearing it? And I don't think we did.
I, I don't think it's necessary, I think we did a very, very good job with that one.
So, did you make a motion on that?
I did, I made a, made a motion to deny it.
Oh, I did, did I second it?
Yes.
You did.
You did.
Oh, okay.
We heard you.
Speaking of hanging.
I don't know if I made it or to make comments.
He made a second on my other one.
No, he made the second one, there is no second right, there is no second right now.
There is no second. Anybody?
Well, he's seconded it.
I didn't.
No, he didn't.
I just made comments.
He just made comments.
He seconded one before that.
One before that he seconded.
So let's-
I'll second.
Oh, Joanne's got it.
Ladies first.
Joanne's got this one.
Any other discussion?
I'll third her second.
We have a first and a second on to deny a rehearing request on this application. All those in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, five zero zero. Okay, so I see no correspondence or action items, other than the fact that there is an all boards meeting on the fourteenth or something like that there.
When?
A boards meeting.
June fourteenth.
June fourteenth.
June fourteenth, it's for chairman and
And vice chair.
Vice chairman or designees.
Alternates, so I'm gonna be able to go that night, are you gonna be able to go?
I, I'm gonna be able to go, but I, I, I'm going as a sewer commissioner, so if somebody else from the zoning board would like to go as a designated, that would be great.
It's a fourteen-
It's a Monday night, it's two weeks from yesterday.
But it was a Friday.
Fourteen.
Oh, the eleventh is, the eleventh is Friday, that's it.
So is there anybody that would like to go with me?
I think I can go if you need somebody.
Anybody else interested, we wanna vote it?
I knew my flight schedule, I, I might hook up for that.
What's the date?
I gotta start using this in the phone.
Fourteenth of, uh-
I have a meeting that night.
All right, Gail, is, is it okay with Gail, uh, attend? Gail's attending.
All right.
So the question that I have is
I have to work that night.
Is there any issues that we, uh, want to bring up as a zoning board to the all boards meeting? Right now, I don't have anything on my heated agenda.
Well, it's not the issue that Joanne brought up about the ordinance, the three point seven point hundred that the mixed use ordinance.
I think that might be more appropriate for the fall when you're getting ready to, when they're getting ready to do zoning changes. This is, this is every board in town.
So is this like processes, training?
What prompted, what prompted this?
They, they normally do this every year.
It's usually something that prompts.
They normally-
It's usually a big item on the table that usually is-
Not that I know of.
I don't even know most of these people.
And who's going, now, did we have the, the attorney there at the all boards meeting last year?
Attorney Drescher?
Yes.
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay.
So you've been to this before, Joanne?
Yeah, I've been to one before, yeah, I think it was a couple of years ago though, if I'm not mistaken.
They might not have done one last year, I-
I don't recall it, yeah. So is there any, any burning desires regarding in the process, training dollars? We hate our selected night of the month, uh, we have to debate it and duke it out with somebody else?
Um, I think one of the, one of the issues I had was, was the, um, the zoning budget being included in the planning budget and I, I-
Is that the training, training budget?
Yeah, the, the, well, right.
Or for lawyers or whatever it is?
Well, I think, I, in the training, 'cause they, I think they've combined them in the past before. And I, I, I'd like to see them separate.
They're combined with the planning's budget?
The, the zoning board, the zoning board minute takers, the zoning board training fall under the planning department.
Why?
I don't know, that's how it was done when I got here.
See, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see separation.
Is there a reason that you'd like to see it separate, that we get held hostage for any reason or don't get a share?
We are, we are, uh, a board unto ourselves and they are a board unto themselves and, um, we are two separate entities, I, I don't know why we have to have a, we should have a combined budget, I mean-
Wasn't there an issue last year when there wasn't training or monies for something that they, they wanted to go to? I can't remember what it was.
I think there was somebody that wanted to go to a training, but it wasn't, I think we set enough money aside for the spring planning and zoning conference and then the law lecture series in the fall, as well as the fall.
But what if you don't, what if everyone doesn't attend those? And then wouldn't you have money left over to be used for something else? Do they expect everybody to attend though? I don't think they set money aside for everybody.
We just go on the past years on how much we've spent and try and try and, we try and anticipate.
So what if everyone wanted to go, they don't budget for that?
We would find a way to, for those, for those items, I think, I forget what the specific training opportunity for, it was, it's different. But we try and find a way to make it work.
Well, we'll see how the conversation flows and what's going on.
Usually they just ask you for a report, don't they, how things are going and-
No.
I don't know.
No, at these meetings, that's what they've done in the past.
Oh.
They just expect you to stand up and say, we're doing blah, blah, blah and-
And I think they're trying to change it up a little bit this year.
All right, well, we'll see.
And Brian's here, I saw that Brian Ro- is it Brian?
Rose.
Rose, and he's new, so this would be a great opportunity for all the boards to meet him together.
I haven't been to one of these myself, so I have no idea what to expect. If they make me wanna stand up and say-
I'll tell you the same thing that I've said for the last twelve years. I'm looking for something to show you. Um, we need access to the GIS program as a land use board.
You should have it by the end of next week.
Get out. I'm shocked.
I can check with IT tomorrow to see if it's public, it's, is, I've seen it and it should be up.
Is it web-based?
Yeah, it's web-based, it's, um, done by CDM out of Massachusetts.
See, Derek knew you were gonna bring it up for the all-boards meeting, so he's gonna get it done before.
I don't have anything else to complain about.
Yeah.
I've been complaining for, uh, twenty years now, however long they've had it.
No, it's web-based and it'll be available to the public, they were supposed to show it to the board of selectmen tonight, but they shortened their meeting so we could have our meeting in here.
They are so good.
So, as soon as it's online, I will email you the link so everyone can use it and play with it, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I have that note to bring up, if, if, see how the conversation flows. And, and you have the email that says when it is and things?
I will send it to you, Gail, I had only sent it out to Kathy and Kevin.
Okay.
All right.
And, and the public is welcome to attend, but I think they're limiting the participation to-
Where's that?
It's at the, uh, media, um-
Library?
Yeah.
At the-
At the library.
Uh, people, anybody can attend, they just send, they, they invite.
To participate.
The, the-
To participate, anybody.
But if you're there and you're part of the zoning board-
I say, and what do you do?
They won't tell you to leave.
They won't, no, they'll probably be thrilled that more people wanna go.
Well, we'll be there.
Representative White's schedule, I think, I think I'm clear that night.
It's interesting.
No clouds, good to go, runway's clear?
Is there any way, you know, I, I, I get a little dumpy, I understand the logic why the planning board doesn't wanna comment on things that we give them
Yeah.
because they don't wanna feel prejudiced, but, on an issue, but there, sometimes there are ways of stating things which are non, I think prejudicial.
To eliminate that procedure. When I talked to him-
What procedure, the fact that they don't make a comment or the fact that-
No, even asking for them to comment. Barbara made a comment when this, uh, when the application that we reviewed for comment was heard at the last meeting. Barbara made a comment that they seem to be getting a lot more of these and their comment is usually no comment for the, you know, for that very reason. And that maybe it should be revisited because, um, maybe it's something that, it's not, it's not serving its intended purpose. He was trying to find out why it was put in there in the first place and I told him to call Tony Marks.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, we both have our roles, right, the zoning board and the planning board are very inter- I mean, they're very important to the process.
Tied together.
They're land use.
Should be talking to each other. You should be talking to each other.
Like, one of the applicants says, hey, the, the planning board said it was okay, so why does the zoning board say it's a problem? Well, we have our independent charter with independent responsibilities on the land use. That's why we don't want to blend them, we want to make sure that we're distinct and with purpose.
Right.
Those are those five questions we've got to get through. That's what our purpose is.
Years ago, they used to have joint meetings, right? Still could be requested.
So good.
They used to do it a lot. Haven't had one in years.
As I'm sitting here, because these lights are just... Submission, okay, we've always, we've always said, now, I don't know, does, does the state jurisdiction, that we, the submission, people can submit information up to the, even at the meeting. And we've always kind of said, well, if that happens, and we'd like, this past one, we didn't have a chance to review it, our automat, not automatically, but nine times out of ten, you'll say, we're, we're going to continue the public hearing because it was received at the eleventh hour.
Right.
Now, is there anything that, that we want to consider whether or not all information must be submitted at least three days before?
In your rules of procedure, it says that it has to be submitted four days prior by noon, which is the Friday before. However, I guess my feeling is that is, that's your rule. But if somebody comes in with something and tries to provide public input, and you say, I'm sorry, I'm not going to take this because it didn't meet our deadline.
We're going to reheare.
If that goes up to Superior Court, they're not even going to look at the merits, is my opinion. They're going to just say, remanded, you need to take public input. So we can urge people and we can have it in the rules as much as possible, but the fact is... They bring it in, we have to...
It's a bendable rule.
If it's, if it's in and it's significant enough, then we just continue it so we can review it. And if it's not, then we deal with it. But, you know, we just hope that everything comes in in advance.
I'd love for, to be in there because then people would become more conscientious on getting it in. I think you'd have less slippage that gets it in from the Ford to the, I know.
Yeah, but they, they've all got...
Considerably more on Monday afternoons, I have to check my email every half hour because Derek said it needs something, oh, by the way.
Monday, what'd you say, Monday? Oh, a Tuesday.
The parties banter back and forth through.
Yeah, that's true, of course.
The parties banter back and forth to Derek, and they send this email and this bit of information. So that's going to go to the other, the opposing side, and then they give their comments back. So it just keeps going, right up until the time of the hearing.
What I, what I think is important, that we do two things in the zoning board, is one is we decide cases. The two, the second one is that we actually hear from the public and they have a vested interest in, in participating. And if we were, if we set up walls where they, oh, you didn't get it in in time, they're going to feel they were short-changed. And they don't, and they coming to the meeting doesn't mean anything, and so you start looking, and it just gets... We, it's just like when people keep coming back up to provide more comments, you ask, is it significant? But in the end, we tend to let them, because they feel part of the process and they maybe buy into it more, I don't, I don't know.
Does the planning board have anything in their regs that say when, I just curious?
I know they do as far as the applicant, the applicant has to have revised plans in by a certain date. But as far as the public and abutters, I, I'm not sure if they do or not. But again, it's a public hearing process.
I mean, one has it one way, you have it another way, that's all.
I think it's a working, I think it's working.
Well, you can, you can set it up however you want, and you can choose to disregard, but there are consequences for doing that and legal fees associated, you know? And, and I'm just saying, we can urge people, you can have them in rules of procedure, I can explain it to every person that comes to the counter. But when it comes right down to it, if somebody comes to the meeting and hands you something, I think what Gail said is, if it's significant, maybe you have to continue it. If it's, if you look at it, well, it's not...
I mean, even, the, the courts might not even remand it back. They might just, as a better punitive measure, they could decide it for you, which they've been known to do.
If it's an easy one, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like getting...
What I've seen, though, is you mostly have attorneys who are abusing this for the most part, because how many times have we gotten major packets of information from attorneys the day of the hearing? And I think that Gail has it right, if it's, they bring it in significant, fine. If you drop it on us at the eleventh hour, you're not going to get a decision that night. You're going to wait for the next meeting.
It's like the sixty-page or whatever document, the piscataqua thing. Okay, well, one, nobody comes to explain it, why isn't it significant, why is it significant to be in front of this case? Nobody explains it. So you just have this sixty-page document or whatever it is, and you're like, I'm supposed to read this, and go, what was it?
Yeah, I read fast, but not that fast.
So you give it all weight, I guess.
This is volunteer, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, right.
Any other last comments?
Motion to adjourn somebody?
I, I'll second your motion. Thanks.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done. Thanks, Lynn, make it six zero zero. Emphasis.